Your comments can be captured by the clerk to be memorialized for record. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and his current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's office. I will now call this special meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Clerk, can you announce the meeting and roll quickly?
Good evening. You're hereby notified that a special meeting of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, is scheduled to be conducted in a hybrid format on Thursday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at five P. M. for a budget workshop in the fifth floor conference room of the Municipal Office Building, seven oh one North Seventh Street, Kansas City, Kansas. Roll call, Burrows. Townsend. Commissioner Townsend.
Here.
Thank you. Burns.
Here.
Ramirez, we have an absence memo. Hill.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Stites. Davis.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Garner.
Here, thank you. Clerk, again, this is our ongoing series of workshops as we navigate to getting towards a budget that your Unified Board Commissioners feels comfortable with. And this aids them in making an informed decision for the two thousand and twenty-six budget. I'll turn the meeting over to our county administrator, Mr. David Johnson, and he'll take the meeting from here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Last week, I presented my recommended balanced budget as required by the by the charter and and have handed the budget to you. You've made certain requests. You've we've presented to you earlier this week the line item budgets of a number of our departments that we'll be reviewing today. And our budget director will be working with you tonight to review those budgets. We'll be having similar information giving to you for next week's budget sessions, line item budgets, to have those discussions with our budget with our department heads as well. It's an interesting budget season because in the middle of this year's budget seasons, normally we have normal budget amendments for the current budget year, but it makes it challenging to make amendments for the current budget year because we are in a revenue budget neutral budget year, and therefore our ability to make normal budget amendments for the current year is limited, just basically because we are are limited in by state statute on how we approach this year's budget. There are a little budget, there are some budget amendments we will be making in this year's budget, but it's not the same because we don't have the latitude to make the budget amendments that we have in the past normally. And in so we are kind of limited in that regard. But we also have with 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 commission direction, have also instituted a guardrail for the twenty-six budget with a revenue limit on property tax levy of not exceeding a three mil increase above of above our mil rate. So we are limited in that regard as well. But regardless, there is a commitment, I think, from staff and from the commission, whatever decision decisions are made at the end. We will all work to make it work. And that's why we have these budget sessions. And that is to have open, honest, and transparent discussions to help this commission make the best, most informed decision to for our public on the services that we can we can we can provide them for fiscal year twenty-six. And what we have packaged for the neck, at the very least, the next three budget workshops, there very well may be more. Bring in the department heads for our departments. Have open, honest discussion about their budgets in a manageable way. And we're starting with seven departments tonight. And and see how this proceeds. We'll have opening remarks from our our budget department led by Mr. Lindsay. And then it will be directed by the commission because this is now a budget process led by them now. It's their budget, I passed it on to them last week. And this process will lead toward a budget that will be before them or a vote eventually. So, Mr. Lindsay, where's yours?
Good evening, everyone. Reginald Lindsay, Unified Government Budget Director. I have joined me Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director, and also Samuel Herr, Lead Analyst in the Budget Office. Tonight, joining us, we have Sheriff's Department, District Attorney, Registered Deeds, Elections Office, the Legislative Auditor, Parks and Rec, and Municipal Courts. They're all here to discuss their budgets if need be. The budget is going to start, what we're going to do tonight is going to start with a budget overview for each department. Then there there'll be the opportunity for the departments to come up and talk about the detail of their operations. Also, the department information that we'll be going over tonight, it is also in your budget document, starting on page one forty-one, where there's an overview of departments' strategic goals, along with their accomplishments in the prior year. Then along with that is also departments' financials. So the premise of the information that we're going to be going over tonight, the budget data will be presented based on the funds in the Unified Government's certified funds that go through the state of Kansas. This does not include grant funds, project funds, or internal service funds that come from outside funding sources or that pass through certified funds. The certified funds are detailed in the budget documents, financial overview, which can be found on page fifty-three within the budget document. Budget, the department's budgets reflect portions of the tax levy and general funds and restricted funds. Special revenue and enterprise funds will be excluded from the pie charts that we go through in this presentation. So first department that we're going to do an overview of is the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's Department does represent two of the goals that the commission has set out. That would be uphold fiscal sustainability, also focuses on service and communication. Also, the sheriff's budget is seventy-five percent personnel shown by the pie chart. Twenty-two percent of their budget is from contractual services. As a percent of tax levy funds with on the county side, the sheriff makes up thirty-five percent of that cost. Of costs that are in the County General Fund, the sheriff makes up forty-six percent of that cost. Total county budget for the Sheriff's Department is forty-three million dollars. Funded FTE includes two hundred and forty-five FTEs. Department hierarchy includes Sheriff Administration, Detention Bureau for Adult, Detention Bureau for juveniles, and Field Bureau, Community and Support Services, and Field Bureau Operations. Some of the key notes about the expenses within their budgets are their largest expense is the operation of adult and juvenile detention facilities. Contractual and commodity budgets include jail food, medical, and housing, and those make up eighty percent of the budget. And the next largest expense is maintenance and operations at five percent of the sheriff's budget. Also, as part of this, some of their two thousand and twenty-six budget impacts include an increased cost for inmate housing, which is an incremental hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And then also inmate medical, which is an incremental six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And inmate food adult is incremental one hundred and seven thousand dollars. And then inmate who juvenile for juveniles, so it's eighty-two thousand dollars. And then over time, we have built in a additional one point two million dollars, which we did cut from the budget in two thousand and twenty-five and realized that we needed to build it back in. Also, there's additional fleet gasoline of seventy-five hundred dollars that is added in. And then for the two thousand and twenty-six capital improvement projects, sheriff will be getting a new jail management system that totals nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Also, we have a fleet transfer going to our Transfer Internal Service Fund for vehicles and to service the vehicles of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Also courthouse security equipment of seventy-five thousand dollars, and then security electronics of thirty-five thousand, and the jail intake remodel of of two hundred thousand dollars. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to you or defer to you, Mayor, to allow you to invite the sheriff up if you would like to.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. I believe we have sheriff's optic.
Thank you for having me.
Lindsay, was there anything in particular?
So so if there's are any questions that any fellow commissioners and you yourself may or have a sheriff's optic, I think you are free to ask those. And I guess on sheriff's optic, he may have some things he wants to share also.
All right. Before we take commission questions, Sheriff, since you're here, we'll give you the floor if you want to make a presentation brief.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not going to go through any slides or anything like that. I think, you know, things that we've talked about prior, which isn't going to be a surprise, is and the slide depicts that, our biggest cost being the detention center, which, at the end of the day, we have very little control over in the sense of how many people are there and what some of these things cost the county. So when when we looked at the budget that was presented to you versus the budget that we asked for, there are definitely some areas, like inmate housing, for instance, that have been shorted. And it's the same conversation we've had many, many times before, which is, at the end of the day, that bill is going to come because we have to house those people. And so that's something that would just have to be dealt with at a later date, should there be a shortage. But probably my biggest concern is the positions that have been proposed to be frozen. Forty-seven positions total are proposed to be frozen within the sheriff's office. Twenty-nine of those are deputies. And we currently have a shortage of thirty-four. So if my math is correct, I'm being told I can hire five deputies in the next year, and that's not that's not going to work. I was I was very willing to work with the administrator and budget this year in freezing ten spots. But to think that we can freeze twenty-nine and that not trigger a failure to adequately fund concern, then we're we're kidding ourselves because it's going to. You know, I think a misconception is that when the sheriff's office, if the sheriff's office was full-staffed, that that we, you know, now have these extra people and and we have a relief. We really have very little relief, even at fully staffed. So when you're talking thirty-four short, that's beyond understaffed. We have, we were moving in a good direction, still are. With our hiring and recruiting, we've got fourteen or fifteen that test, I think, next Thursday. And so those numbers are still moving in the right direction. But what we didn't forecast was the large amount of retirements that came to us over this last year. And, you know, great, great for those folks. That's what you work your your life for, is to be able to do it. It's something that the police department has experienced from time to time, which is a large number of retirements at once. We've never had that, and unfortunately, we did at this point. And so it's just, it's left us, it's left us in a spot where five funded deputy positions isn't isn't going to cut it. I've told the commission, you know, I want to work with you guys, want to be that partner. I understand the issues you're having. But at the end of the day, my responsibility is to the sheriff's office and the community to do what statutorily I'm required to do, and that takes people. And so to avoid a a claim of failure to fund, we're going to have to have a discussion about those frozen positions. Outside of that, we can work through some of this. You know, it will, it will result in deferred maintenance and throwing off some replacement schedules and stuff that we've worked hard to establish, but we'll we'll deal with that the best we can. But housing, those those types of of expenditures and and the staffing are the two things I just need need you guys to understand. So that's really all I've got. I can take any questions.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Sheriff, I want to commend you on the professionalism that you portrayed for your department this past month. We all know it was difficult, but I think we all agree that you did the right thing for for Deputy Ming, and I appreciate it, and I think the whole community does. My question is, you're asking for almost a million dollars in the jail management system. How old is the one you have now?
It came in in, I'd have to go back and look, twenty twelve? Twenty-twelve, I think. I'd have to go back and look for sure. What we've run into is, you know, things change, technology needs change. As other softwares have started to be used either by the police department or other other folks, now there's been limitations to this software. We had, over the years, we've had some not the best customer service stuff we've worked through. But it's just becoming antiquated, and there's other other things that we need to address, other needs, and it all ties into the jail management system. So instead of doing it piece by piece, we're trying to do it as a whole. But we're also in a little bit of a holding pattern on that because we're working with the police department on a whatever they're going to end up doing for their their system so that we can ensure we're only doing it once, and they're either going to be compatible or maybe even the same product. But there are just, there are just some things and, you know, requests of the system that we're now trying to get it to do that it's just not capable of.
I think leads to my next question about that, is it going to be compatible with the police department and the DA?
So the police department for sure is the part we're trying to ensure that it's compatible with, or even the same vendor that they might go with that would offer both. As far as the DA's office and and DA Dupree could speak more to that. I don't know that there's a integration with his system that's even possible. I don't I don't know. And so I don't know that that's a need or a concern at the moment.
Okay. I know you're not, it wouldn't be tied into the district court. They've gone on their own different system with the state. But I was just concerned if the DA and the, if the DA and the police department, if the three of you could have the same one, it would be very beneficial.
So our our biggest connection is with the police department because as they bring folks in and arrests are completed, it's it's done electronically. And to get their system and this system to work, some years ago, we had to pay for an interface to be built just to make that happen. And so it's been, it's been a struggle ever since. And like I said, technology has just advanced, the needs of the jail has advanced. For anybody that doesn't know, one of the requirements of the office also is that we are the official record of the detention center. And so every person that's in and out and and all the information that goes along with that, we're required to keep, which is what this system does. And so accessibility issues, you you name it, we just, we've we've got to the point, we've got to do something. And so, yes, we're trying to be as compatible as we can.
Thank you for all you do, Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Sheriff, um, in looking at the the budget documents, we've been given budget line item detail, I'm showing your twenty-five amended budget was four point, excuse me, forty-one point nine million. And your twenty-six proposed is forty-three point two. Is that sounding right to you? So a one point three million.
Probably, yeah. I don't have those two numbers in front of me, but.
So in terms of twenty-six proposed, with forty-three point two, do you know what you requested as far as a twenty-six proposed?
I don't have that, no.
I, what I was wanting you to do is walk us through the inmate housing piece again, just fresh on that, it's very expensive. I noticed this increase of one eighty-nine, but that seems a drop in the bucket compared to the overall cost. If you would just talk with us again.
Yeah, sure.
You've brought this to us multiple times in past budget cycles where you are telling us it costs what it costs.
Yeah, absolutely. So what it boils down to is the detention center is designed and has been retrofitted over the years, but at this point, designed to ha- to house a certain amount of people. When we reach that point, we have to house them somewhere, which is where our housing costs come in, and we have to farm them out. And we have contracts with several different counties where we do that, and we always shop for the best rate for those contracts. But the amount of people that that we have in custody isn't something I control at all. I know there's some people out there, not saying this room, but there are people out there that believe I can release people at at my will, and that's not the case. Short of charges being dropped or a disposition on a case, they're they're going to be released either by the the DA's office or a judge. I I can't do that. And so the more people that are arrested in our county, and you got to keep in mind that is all the cities, that's any trooper that arrests somebody in the county, KU Police, Community College, they they all come here. So I don't, I don't control that. So historically, we have been good at at estimating our housing costs. And every year, there has been an increase. But I was told today that this year we overestimated a little bit, so we're in a better position. But yeah, that's that's the bill that I talk about. It's just like. It's just like with medical and food, where we have to feed them. We have to provide medical per state law. Medical costs increase every single year. We negotiate that the best we can. But we've, we, we have to have it. And, you know, medical can be one of those pay now or pay later situations because if you don't get quality, then you end up in a, in a bad position or could be in a bad position in the future. So that's the problem with those costs. I wish I could, you know, control those more. Like I said, we, we search for the best rates in those things. You know, it comes to medical and detention centers specifically, there are not a lot of companies that do that. That's, that's pretty specialized. So even in that, you, you know, you're kind of stuck by what your options are. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. And then I was going to go to the medical next because again, twenty-five amended at five point eight million and those twenty-six at six point one, which is about the difference there. And again, you discussing the fact that you can't really control those costs. And the last thing is the overtime at one point two million. It's about the difference between last year's and this year's proposed budgets.
Yep.
There were.
So, and that goes back to, to my previous statement. If, if us being fully staffed meant, well, there's, there's fluff or there's extra, then you would see, you would see a quick return on you hire more deputies and the overtime rate drops. The problem is, like I said, even when, when we get closer to that fully staffed number, we still, we run, we run pretty thin. And there's, you know, lots of reasons for that. Over the years, pins have been moved for different things. At one point, a previous administration correctional specialist position was created. You may remember that. There were some deputy pins used to create those. And so our deputy pins, you know, really, we've got to a point where even at a fully staffed number, there's not extra. There's not, there's not a big relief factor. And so in order to see the overtime come down, we have to get closer to that filled number before we really see any, any effect on that. And the example I use is, you know, if, if we're looking for six people to fill a shift, six overtime positions to fill a shift, and we only have two, then we're still running that shift short. And, I mean, the, the overtime is, is there and still not being filled. And so that's the only way to really reduce that number. And at, to think that filling five deputies only is going to do anything, it's, it's not.
I just feel like in general, you know, when we do freeze positions, which I completely understand rationale, we drive overtime in other departments. And so it's a balancing act of determine, it costs money too. So in fact, it's probably cost more.
Well, and one thing I've talked about, and we haven't talked about it in, in a, in a public setting because there is safety and security concerns surrounding it. We've talked about staffing, what those levels look like. That conversation hasn't changed. It's the same. And so we're, like I say, we're moving in a, in a good direction. But we, we have definitely been affected by the, the retirement bug.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kane? Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question, Sheriff Sopick. The number of employee positions frozen, forty-seven?
Forty-seven is the proposed number, correct.
Okay. And you also mentioned the number thirty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
So out of the forty, out of the forty-seven, twenty-nine of those would be deputies.
Deputies? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. And Sheriff, just want to echo what my colleague, Commissioner Byrne, said. You have led with integrity and excellence and poise during a very, very difficult time. And so thank you for your work in our community. I, I have a lot of questions, so I'm going to try to shrink them because I know we have a lot of other departments to, to go through. But just want to make note, out of the county general fund, forty-six percent is your department. And so we've had a lot of conversations about the county and what the county does and kind of what it's offering, but I do want to make note of that of just a significant portion of our property tax dollars goes to supporting the operations of your department. And I'm sure you're very, very aware and understand the gravity and weight of that. A few years ago, we decided to go with you on the journey of providing pay parity between KC KPD and your sheriffs. Can you just tell us, just a quick overview, what the impact that has been on the department? And have you seen any progress in your recruiting efforts?
Yeah, absolutely. So a hundred percent, it's been a, a positive, positive move for the sheriff's office. I can tell you that that number of thirty-four would be a whole lot higher than thirty-four had, had that not been done. If I remember right, it was in the forties when I came into office, middle forties. And so, I mean, that, that right there is, is a testament to what it has done. As far as our recruiting numbers, like I said, and actually I had a note, fifteen set to test next week. We weren't getting fifteen, we weren't getting ten, we were getting two or three to test. So there, that has definitely been a positive. And then I would say for the staff that was already employed, it's been a retention mechanism that we thought it would be and has, has kept them around. In fact, we've had several deputies that have left for, as they say, greener pastures and have come back. That's, that happens more times than not. And, and asked to go back through the process to be rehired. And so it's definitely been a positive.
Thank you. With the, the amount of positions that are open that we would budget for, you're, you're saying five doesn't work, thirty-four is pretty expensive. Is there a number in between that would help? And, and, and keeping in mind, we're talking about one year's worth of a budget, considering you all were able to hire, I'm just estimating, a net maybe ten to twelve new sheriffs since pay parity.
Yeah. So, you know, if, if we had the ability to hire up to fifteen, then that would be a number that, that I would be comfortable with. The reason I was willing to freeze the ten this time, and I talked to the county administrator about this before, is I was very confident those ten wouldn't be filled, and so that makes sense. So, yeah, if we had the ability to hire the fifteen, I think that would, that would keep us all moving in the right direction and give us that ability. Because one thing we don't want to do is get into a spot of having fifteen applicants, twenty applicants showing up, and then having to turn people away because we run out of pins because those people don't come back. And so we're trying to make that positive headway. And sometimes you only get one, one shot at that.
Thank you. My last question, can you just generally speak to the services that you provide particularly to cities outside of Kansas City, Kansas, but are within Wyandotte County?
Yeah. So obviously, like I said, the detention center, we hold for every single city. We do build those cities, and so they, they pay a daily rate. That daily rate is something we are currently looking at. It hasn't been upgraded or updated in a while. But for this body, you know, that's kind of tricky because an increase in that fee just hits you guys on the other side of the budget. But that is something we're looking at. So that's, that's the detention piece. The courts, serving the courts, you know, it could be a case from any city that is being tried in district court or going through the district court process, which is going to be the court transport element. Anything in the courthouse, obviously, is, is a, is a countywide function. And then the actual service, the paper service. So we're serving civil papers, replevance, PFAs, evictions in every single city in the county. And again, that's a, that's a function that, that the whole county is, is getting. And then third, ORU, offender registration, which is required by state law to be run through the sheriff's office. That is, is another countywide function that everybody has that ability to look up in their neighborhoods and see, you know, who's living by them regardless of what city they're in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kane?
Thank you, Mayor. Did you come up with the number, Sheriff, of how many you were able to hire? Or did, would staff tell you that's what you should hire, or how that work?
No. So I was presented with the numbers that they were recommending to freeze for the budget that they presented to you guys.
Okay. So what my suggestion is, is you guys sit down and go at it one more time and come up with a, something in the middle. More than five, less than fifteen, or whatever it is, but you can't operate with just the five, correct?
Correct.
And then the last time we were in a situation like that, Sheriff Green was able to sue us, is that correct?
Correct.
So if you don't get what you need, then you could force us to do it.
Well, there's a, there's a process for that, and that's the failure to fund process. So in short, yeah, there is a, a court, a process through the courts that we would, we would have to be involved in, if you will. And then the courts would decide what that funding level, whether that funding level is adequate or not.
And, and that's why I bring it up, that I think you guys need to sit down, come together. You, I don't care how you can beat the hell out of each other for all I care, but come up with a better number for you and a, and a lesser, or a more, a bigger number for you and a lesser number for him. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Administrator?
I'm glad that Commissioner Kane brought that up. I think it's important for all of us to understand how we got to that number of frozen. And I, I think it's important for, for, for all of us to understand how we got to that number. And I think when we were discussing it with the sheriff and we were talking internally, Michael Peterson had the good summary of how we got to that frozen numbers. Michael, are you prepared to talk how we got to the frozen number?
So Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director, just the process that we went through during this budget cycle with positions across the board, not just sheriff, was we were trying to eliminate the vacancy trend that we've talked a lot about. So if I remember correctly, when we get back to this, I think it's roughly eight million dollars of personnel that wasn't funded in the county general fund with our normal budget. So basically, what we were doing is we were freezing positions that we would not anticipate being able to fill without adding more funding to the budget. So we were making sure that we could fund every position that was posted and filled across the unified government departments. The process that we went through was basically looking at what departments had been staffed at for the last few years. And so the number, I believe, that we ended up with for the sheriff's department was roughly three hundred and forty positions, plus I think some, some additional for cadets. And that was a number that we had not hit over the past five years with the exception of during COVID. So that was a number that we had never gotten to in the last five years of normal hiring. And that's what we, that's why that number was used. And that was actually a more generous number of positions than what we gave for most of our county departments, which we ended up freezing almost all vacancies you get to the budget that we have right now.
Mayor, Commissioner Townsend has her hand raised.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to all in the room. Sheriff, good evening. I have to echo what's already been said by my colleagues, Davis and Burns, concerning your demeanor and presentation as well as that of your entire department during the last couple of weeks and the excellent, though sad matter in which we all said goodbye to Deputy Ming. So, and not only Deputy Ming, but there was also such a presence with the other sheriffs hong going as well. So had to say that. So my next question, since we are in a budget setting, please do not take this as disrespect for any in your department or you. We've been talking about positions. But I want to go back to a subject that, that Commissioner Davis talked about. In a couple of years, we moved forward with the request for parity. But again, since we're in a budget, I got to ask this budget question. Can anyone tell me what the impact in these numbers is with regard to the parity aspect? And if we can't do that tonight, I'd like to know what that number is. If we're not looking at cutting heads, we're looking at everything. But can someone tell me what the personnel numbers would look like for staff if we were not at the parity situation?
Regent Lindsay, Unified Government Budget Director. Right now, Commissioner Townsend, we, we do not have that, that number. Is something we can bring back to you?
I would appreciate that. That was the only inquiry I had. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Commissioner, just some clarity for me, Sheriff. I know that you said there were retirees, and I guess I'm a little confused. Peterson talked about you averaging out basically on what you had been able to fill in the past. And you were talking about retirements and that you had academy classes. I guess for clarity, the positions of those individuals that have retired, are, are those being cut? I mean, what are we actually looking at? I mean, and then the positions that Mr. Peterson is talking about that hadn't been filled, I guess, are you looking to fill those? Do you just want those funded? Just a little more clarity on, on where we're at. I mean, are, are we cutting positions that, that were filled? And then now we're, we're eliminating those? Are we cutting positions that weren't filled, but you're trying to get those filled?
Yeah, sure. So both, yes, yes, yes to both. So there's a couple retirements that those people are not off the books yet. They're happening, they're happening in the next couple of months. And so if, if they were to go, or if they were off the books now, that number of thirty-four would be thirty-six. And so, you know, instead of filling five, we'd be able to fill seven. But the ones that have come before them that are already off the books, yes, those are, those would be, and I'd have to get the total number for you. But there, there are going to be some that are not being refilled if we're only able to hire five. We're going to be at that bubble. We've probably had four retirements, I think. I have to go back and look. And so, you know, we're, we're, we're almost at the break even point. My, my bigger concern is just because we've been making it to this point doesn't mean that we're not still creating a problem for us and for our people with the shortage. And so if we had had none of those And so if we had had none of those retirements and we were being told, you know, we could fill five or seven positions, I don't know that it would be as big of a deal. But since those people are already off the books, they're, they're coming out of this, out of this total number. And so, like I said, we're probably pretty close to, to breaking even with that. Hope that answers your question.
A little bit. Yes, Mr. Peterson, I guess just a little more clarity. Five positions that Sheriff is talking about, does that include the positions that have already been funded? Historically, are we talking about cutting positions that, that were, had been funded but hadn't been filled? And so you're cutting them?
Yes.
So again, Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director. According to the data that we were looking at when we went through the budget process, we are not freezing below a point that we were ever staffed at in the last few years. So the goal for us, for each department, was to try to get to a personal number, not necessarily an exact type of position. So basically, let's just say for the sheriff, if they had $40 million in personnel, that they would be able to fill $40 million worth of whatever positions that they needed to fill as long as they didn't exceed that dollar amount. So that's what we were trying to do as this budget. The budget position inventory represents what is currently in those numbers that we've prepared as part of the proposed budget, but it can be flexible. The goal is for it to be flexible and for them to be able to use the full amount of that budget authority without worrying about a personnel trend going forward. So if a position has rolled off during this year, we would anticipate that there would be funding for that position to go back on because we did not cut below the max staffing level that we've had the past, the past several years for the Sheriff's Department. We just could not fill much above where we've been in recent history.
Would it be, so would it be safe to say, Sheriff, you want to be, you want, you want funding to be at all your, all your allocated staffing numbers? Whereas I think staff is looking at just what you've been able to reveal over the course of it. You want the funding to go, to be able to, if you can fill all the positions that you're allocated, you want to have that money available. Is that, is that safe to say?
Well, I would, I would like to, sure, have the ability to fill everything should we get to that point. But that's not even what I'm asking for today. So to your question, yes, some of these that are, are proposed to be frozen were previously funded, just not filled. And while the number that they're using may not be below a number that we had been at before, still doesn't mean that that number was an adequate staffing number. And that's what we can't lose sight of. So, yeah, we, we may not be dropping below a number that we've been at over, what, five years, you said? But that doesn't mean that that number was adequate. And I'll tell you right now, it's not. It never was. And so that's why we've worked so hard in our recruiting efforts and to take advantage of the pay parity to, to get us to a better spot. And so I'm not, I'm not sitting here and asking you to fund all 20, or all 34 of what I have open. And what I'm telling, or what I'm, what I'm, I guess, trying to get across is, is that five doesn't, just doesn't cut it.
And I'd like to just piggyback, just again, condolences along with it. Just everything went really well. As far as the, the home going for Deputy Ming and the professionalism. On that again, he really, well, he was. Wanted to share that.
Yeah, thank you for all the kind words and all the support.
Thank you, Sheriff. Before you leave, I think there was a, a request, and I just want to get clarity from the commission. And just so you know, staff did do a good job. They did follow through. Each one of the commissioners should have got line items of each department budget as requested. And so I know some of the commissioners have been going through those. As Commissioner Bynum, I see she's got some of them in front of her, along with some other commissioners, they've got those out. So thank you, staff. I know it was a lot of work. But it, it really allows, in these challenging budgetary times, this commission to look at the budgets of each department, and that helps them get to where they need to be when you talk about an informed decision. Commissioner Kane made a request. I just want to make sure that the commission is in alignment with that request for the sheriff to go back with staff and to try and come to a, a happy median. Are we good? I'll take that as a yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Unified Government Budget Director, Reginald Lindsay. Our next department that we're going to do a budget overview over is the District Attorney. District Attorney has a total county budget of $8.8 million. He also has 71 FTEs, full-time equivalent positions, that is. And then as far as commission priorities, he upheld physical sustainability and also focuses on service and communication for the community. As far as his budget, 90% of his budget is personnel. 9% of it is contractual services. And then out of the county tax levy funds, 7%, he is 7% of that budget. And then of the total County General Fund, he is 9% of that budget. His department hierarchy includes his Community Integrity Unit, its DA diversion program, and then also the District Attorney Division. His 2026 budget impact includes $760,000 for increased personnel costs, which are related to a personnel reorganization that happened at the end of 2024. It relates into increasing hiring. Some of the keynotes for DA's budget is largest expense is rent and lease software for maintaining and contractual use of a cloud-based software system. And then also the DA utilizes a temporary employment service for digit, for a digitizing project. And then last and considerably, his largest expense is physician and medical budget, which is an expense that has contributed to most sexual assault casework within his budget.
Thank you. Attorney Mark DeBree, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity always to come before the commission. And so I appreciate all of you commissioners and county administrator to the budget and all of the assistant county administrators, all folks who have been working diligently on our behalf. I will say at the beginning of this, my staff, both Ms. Brandy Wells, who's over my finances in my office and manages the operations, along with my chief deputy, Damon Mitchell, who's along with us, and Public Information Officer Jonathan Carter. We have met multiple times. And I say that at the, the forefront of this as to make sure that we all kind of know where we are. This budget team, under the direction of Reginald Lindsay and the ACAs who have been working with us and Mr. Johnston have met with us multiple times. And we have sat around the table multiple times and had some very clear and direct conversations. And so what you are seeing came from, I'll use, utilize Commissioner Kane's terminology, some knockout, drag-out conversations, not fights. And I want to lay that out at the beginning because where we are did not come lightly. And I appreciate the folks for meeting with us. I, I think that I should state just a couple of things that you all may not know. And I'm going to speak just for a few moments, and then I'm going to be quiet so that you all can ask me any questions that you have. The role of the District Attorney's Office is to prosecute, according to the state law, any felony cases and misdemeanors that fall under the Kansas statute. And that is our mandate, and we are the representation of the state. And so we must prosecute those cases. There's no other way that they are prosecuted in Wyandotte County but by and through this office. This office, according to the budget numbers, make up 9% of the county budget. 9%. And I say that because we deal with nine different policing agencies. Every case that's on a felony level or misdemeanor via the state statutes that come through Wyandotte County comes through our office, which means that we are the main prosecuting office for Kansas City, Kansas Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, Bonner Springs Police Department, Edwardsville Police Department, State Troopers, KU Police Department, Kansas City, Kansas Community College Police Department, District 500 Police Department, Lake Quivera Police Department. And that doesn't include our wonderful federal partners and task force that we often see cases as they partner with us via the FBI, the DEA, and others. But the point is, we make up 9%, but we deal with three and dealing with Lake Quivera, sometimes four different cities. And they make up upper part of 40 and 50 and 60% of their budgets. But we're 9% and we deal with all of the cases that they bring in. What we have presented today is something that is, I believe, amazing. And what is it that is amazing? That just five years ago, this District Attorney's Office was down about nine attorneys. And we were struggling and we were drowning. And that happened and continued to happen up until about two years, maybe about 18 months, and things changed. And we were able to recruit, to hire, and quite frankly, to compete. And in the last 18 months, we have held attorneys in nearly every position and held on to them for quite some time. What we found was that the experience that they get here in this office is not comparable to any in our region. Now, that is unfortunate, but it is the very thing that folks come to our office for. They're going to get a high volume of cases, a high volume of violent crimes. They're going to get trial work and litigation, and they are going to deal with nine different agencies of cases that are coming. And with that, we need prosecutors to prosecute them, and we have to pay them accordingly to keep them. In the last two weeks, I've had two different District Attorney's Offices give three of my leading senior district attorneys over $30,000 more than what I can pay them. And they did this because in their time here with our office, they've got more experience in the three years here than they would get in 10 years than in our, any of our regional prosecutors offices. Not concerned, I have interviews set up next week. And because we are in a position where we can compete, I did not go back and ask to get $30,000 more for each of those individuals. I said, your time has come to an end because we understand the situation that we are in. But I want to make sure that you all know that we have to have our positions. We have to prosecute our cases, and we have to have attorneys who are experienced so that we can deal with cases that we have to deal with. And unfortunately, as I hear the continuous condolences, that means cases like the individual who put this county in yet another situation concerning our law enforcement. And now all eyes is on this office, who makes up only 9%. And so what I would bid all of you is to keep all of that in mind and to consider the reality of the tasks and the duties that this office has and that this attorneys, the attorneys in my office, have to deal with, along with our staff. Are you have the floor for any questions?
Commissioner Berth.
Thank you, Mark, for all you do. I see here, and I'm looking at a budget printout here of the District Attorney's Office. And I see at the bottom of the 24 amended budget, it says $7,852,609. But your request for 25 is $8,815,402. That's about a million dollars.
Yeah, so do you want me to explain this, or do you want, you want to explain what those numbers mean?
Oh, you can.
Okay, I'll give it a shot. So what we had and where we are, that includes, I believe, the 3% COLA, as well as, one of the things that I tried to kind of indicate at the beginning of this is we had positions that were not filled. And we had spaces that were open. And that has changed. What changed is that with those positions being filled, now we pay that money out. And so with the numbers that we have now, it makes up the full attorney's positions being full, as well as our staff, also including our COLA. Did I kind of clear that up just a little?
So you don't have any vacancies except for the two that you mentioned?
Yeah, the three that I mentioned.
Three?
Yep.
You don't have any other vacancies?
Nope. And those three will be filled if I'm?
Maybe Reggie can explain this to me. At the 26, 25 remaining budget, the next to last column there on page three, you have $1,040,000 left right now. Is that right, Reggie? You see where I'm at?
I do see where he is. He has $3.6 million left, 1.3 months.
I don't know if we have the same thing. I think we do.
Okay. He sounded like from the friend.
You see the 25 remaining?
I, I do see it. And what was your question again?
Is that how much money he has left in his budget presently?
Yes, that, that is correct as of August 7th.
Okay, oh, we only have four more months to go.
And, and that, and that is just for that particular category.
Right.
Fringe expense, fringe expenses, not, not the total budget.
Oh, I understand that. Okay.
That doesn't include salaries. That's, that's a different category. But let me, let me assure you, sir commissioner, a lot can happen by December to make sure. And it has been seen in every year before that those funds are utilized vast majority in salaries, but also in contractual obligations. As Mr. Lindsay indicated, a huge amount of what we deal with is outside of just salary. We have to deal with, for instance, our experts. We have to deal with getting our sexual assault case kits tested. And, and I know who I'm speaking with. So I know you know all of this, Commissioner Burns, having spent a few decades across the street. But all of these things, four decades, pardon? Three, three, okay, I knew. But point being is, the other part that I think you also need to take into consideration with us is we don't have the luxury of looking at a pattern and saying that this is what it's going to be.
I can't project what's going to happen in five months.
And that's not only in our positions, but that's also in our crime.
Right, right.
Commissioner Burns, are you, are you done? I think everyone's waiting to, to make sure that they don't step on your toes from speaking.
No, I'm done. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you. Glad to hear that you're done, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner King.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. One of the keynotes, the last one on this presentation, the DEA's last considerably large expenses, physician and medical expenses, which are contributed to most sexual assault casework. Is there, can you give me kind of a guesstimation or estimation of those costs?
I can tell you that we have, the cost of a sexual assault is about a thousand dollars. It was seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, and then it continues to go up and down depending on who we utilizes. In the last couple of years, I believe we end up switching and going to someone else. But I will tell you, it's over a couple hundred of those every year. And when we got into office, there was a backlog of those sexual assault kits that we had to go through to get tested. And so I don't, I don't see that slowing down past a, a hundred or two every year. And that's at a thousand dollars a while.
So it's thousand, a thousand dollars?
Per test kit, give or take that a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars, depending on what the contract, who we're utilizing.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Davis.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just ask Mr. Lindsay or Mr. Peterson just to reconcile something for me because maybe I'm kind of missing this. On our budget, when we are talking about the DA, there are two pages that I just need to reconcile. One is kind of the general district attorney page. This is page two fifty-three. And it has the expenditure by fund for twenty-twenty-five amended. It's eight million, hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars. And then for the twenty-twenty-six budget, it says eight million, four hundred seventy-six, eight million, four hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars. So there's that, and then there's also the district attorney's, or the, the district attorney, attorney division under the district attorney department. And that's where we see the twenty-twenty-five amended budget, say twenty, seven point five million for the expenditure by fund, and then a twenty-twenty-six budget of eight point five million. So there's kind of a, can you just help me kind of understand the discrepancy? And that is on page two fifty-five.
So Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director. That is one of the things that we discovered when we were prepping for these meetings is we were, as the district attorney mentioned, we were in communication with him up to, up through the last weeks of the budget to try to work through his personnel numbers. And so the numbers that made it into the proposed budget document do not reflect the final number that we had worked through with him. And so we just had missed that when we were putting together our department pages, and you will get an updated department page. The number that's on the slide here is the number that, that should be on the department page for the county general fund or the district attorney's office. And we will be sending that out to you all, the updated corrected page.
Okay, so, so this eight point eight million that we're looking at on screen is the twenty-twenty-six proposed budget?
So the.
Or expense budget?
Work tag detail reports that you received, as well as the slideshow PowerPoint, will match the updated page that, that we will get to you for the district attorney's office.
Gotcha. And for the twenty-twenty-five amended budget, because there, there are two numbers currently, which one is the most accurate?
For the department as a whole, twenty-twenty-five amended budget, we're recommending, it's being recommended, the seven point eight, eight million dollar budget.
Seven point eight, eight, and then you have the eight point.
Yeah, which is at the top of the budget line item detail report and last line as well, grand total.
Okay, can you say that again? I'm sorry. Can you hear that last part?
It's the first number and the last number on the budget department line item detail report that the commissioners received for the twenty-twenty-five amended budget column.
Gotcha, the seven point eight. Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I saw that and it did not completely make sense to me as to how a, a division within a department can have a larger budget than the entire department. So thank you for, for that clarity. I look forward to, to that update. DA Dupree, thank you so much, and Ms. Wells, thank you all so much for all the work that you all do for, for our community. I do want to say congratulations. I believe one of your staff members earned an award for the, it was the Victims Advocate Award in twenty-twenty-four. Briefly, if you can talk about that as well, and then I'll end off with just two more questions.
Thank you. The state of Kansas did award Adriana, which is one of our victim advocates in our office, statewide award for her advocacy and compassion and care that she has for intakes with victims, especially with high volume and high level of cases. As this commission knows that our office has, our, our victims advocates have a higher rate of, of cases than most around the state. And for her to, despite that, still be given this statewide award is amazing. So we are, we're very grateful that they don't allow things to, to fall through the, the gap there.
And I know we've had some discussion over the years about this. On average, how many cases are the victim advocates assisting in?
Well, on, on average, I'll tell you that because of this commission's work and helping us, it is now around three hundred or so. But it was, when we came here, a year or two back, anywhere from eight hundred to nine hundred and fifty. And so we were able, not just through, if, and if you don't mind, this commission's work, but also through the work of, of Ms. Wells and others in our office was able to secure a VAWA grant that allowed us to hire a victims advocate as well as a sex crimes prosecutor. And that's something, again, knowing that our budget is, is where it is, we went out and found those funds. And likewise, as I'm sure you all have heard, and I see Shelley in the, in the building, with our opioid funding, we were able to likewise hire an additional victims advocate and coordinator. Again, funds that are not in these budgets that you're looking at now. And just, I'm stating that because all of those things had to happen to try to help deal with the many cases and the many victims that we deal with from these nine different plus agencies. And so thank you for bringing that up, and thank you all for all your work, including you, Shelley, and concern of the opioid funding and really starting to make that move to, to help take care of the victims in our community.
Thank you. The seven hundred sixty thousand that we have here on screen for personnel, is that going towards additional personnel? Or is it just for kind of the salary benefits? What, what do we mean when we say personnel?
There was a, also a reorganization that was done at the end of twenty-twenty-four. So some of that, some of that cost is there also.
Reorganization, what do you mean?
I can give a rundown on that. So, and I'll try to make it analogous. So our attorneys, we have attorney ones who are fresh out of law school, attorney twos who've got a little bit of experience, attorney threes, and so on and so forth to our deputies. Well, the non-attorney staff did not have, if you will, that letter. Everyone was considered the same level, same administrative assistant. And prior to two thousand and twenty-three, in fact, March of twenty-four, we had a thirty-one percent, excuse me, thirty-one different employees of non-attorneys who left. That was a ninety percent turnover. And they left because there was no room to grow and they did not have any ability to learn more or to get more pay. Since this restructure, which was on the non-attorney side, and in essence, it made it the same as the attorneys. So you have your levels for our non-staff, legal support specialist, level one, level two, so on and so forth. And it gives them the ability to reach for something higher, potentially more funds, potentially more experience. And now we only have had two individuals who have left since, since that restructure, and they left to judges because of their experience and again for more money. And so that restructure happened because we had to compete with our region who were stealing not only our attorneys, but, but our staff.
Thank you, thank you. My last question, the community integrity unit, you all have four budgeted for your staff. Are you fully staffed up for, for it or just where are you at right now with that team?
We are. We're fully staffed.
Great.
And they are fully working.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner King.
Aren't you this glad that this is yours and my last budget?
I will not answer at this point. I'm gonna wait.
The, did you ask for the seven hundred sixty or did you guys come up with this number together? Seven hundred sixty thousand dollars for the cost for personnel.
Yes, this is a number that, from our multiple meetings that we did discuss, that they came up with and presented to us, and we ultimately came to a point where we were in agreement with.
Well, I would have been too if I got what I was asking for. You know, the, the, and if I was one of your employees, I'd be happy. And, and that's no joke because I think it's great you want to pay them. I just don't know how much money we got. We're, 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 we're on thin ice right now. And, and it's, it's, it's hard to come up with a budget when, when we have things because every year you've come in with a big ask. And, and every year that I know you've got it. But I just think we need to be mindful that we have employees across the board that would like to make more money as well. And I, I think you guys do a great job and that the lady that got that award is fantastic. But it, it seems, I would have thought you guys would have had to fight to get to that number instead of just coming up with it right out of the gate is my only concern. You know, we got the sheriff asking for this and they're telling him he can't get it. And then the DA comes in and says, well, he can get what he wants. That's just, just a thought for me, and I'm not giving you a hard time. You, you and I, we love each other like brothers, stepbrothers. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, respond.
Absolutely.
And, and I, I think this is the term that they use before they say something that, that you may not like. With all due respect, it wasn't just given. And with all due respect, I know you got me by a little bit of age, but my memory is a little bit clearer. And in my nine years of doing this, I know I did not just get what I wanted when I asked for it. I had to fight, Commissioner. And so to answer your question, yes, I'm very happy this is your last time. But, but more to the point, I think it's important to note that it takes one point two million dollars to try a capital murder case. It takes seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars for trial prep and trial work for a capital murder case. What I am not asking for is for this body to give me one point two six million dollars because of the crap we just got unloaded on us thirty days ago. And I'm not asking for that because I respect and I understand that this commission is in a position where they have to provide funds for everyone. And so what I've done in that fight is say what we're willing to do is figure it out. Because this community deserves for me to figure it out. And it's not fair for me to come in and say, unless you give me what I know I need according to the data, I can't do right by deputy means family. So no, it wasn't just given to me. Was there a negotiation? Yes. And was there a sacrifice for my office? Yes. Do I need more funds than what the heck I'm getting right now, which is simply budgeting me for my positions that are full? Because I want to be clear, I'm not asking for more money. I'm asking you to give me the money to deal with the folks that I got. If I was coming in here and asking for more money, it would be for an additional one point two because what happened now, we have to resolve and we have to fight. But we got attorneys in this office who's going to figure it out and stay the late hours and do the hard work and not ask you for another dime despite getting a surprise case. So, Sir Commissioner, they did fight me on multiple occasions. And Rodney did a tremendous job leading the crew. And then I had to sit in front of your awesome county attorney and let, excuse me, county administrator and let him know the reality of what it takes to do this job, the statutory obligation of doing this job. And so I understand the sheriff has to fight. I understand others may have to fight. But for nine years, commissioners, I've had to fight. And as I begin this conversation, for those nine years, I've been less than nine percent of the budget. So if there is a fight to be had, let's put it in context. And I'm a super fan of Sheriff Soptick. But Sheriff Soptick's department makes up forty-six percent of the county budget. I make up nine, and I deal with the cases from Sheriff Soptick. I dare not guess how much the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department make up of their budget, but I'm assuming it's over forty-something percent. I make up nine, and what they do, they then send to me. And you all expect for me to do right by it. So what I got? I need to do my job and to make sure that all of our law enforcement agencies, their job is not in vain. Because we're not just arresting and then the DA is releasing them. But the DA is doing his darn job. But I am going to miss you, Commissioner.
Okay. Mr. Head Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Berth, and then Commissioner.
Thank you.
Mr. DA, the, the question I have is the digitation project that we have continued to fund for the last, I think, four years now. Where are we on that? How far along are we on that? Because that is continued to be funding, funded. But at the same time, we know that that, once it becomes fully implemented, it should streamline some of the process.
And I will tell you, thank you for that question, Commissioner. We have come a very long way. As far as the digitization of our past cases, we are complete. We are, are done, and, and maybe I should be a little bit more careful with that. From two thousand thirteen on back, so for about sixty years past that, we, we got it all done. So for those four thousand something odd boxes that this commission approved four years ago, those are done. What you have are ongoing costs for, excuse me, some of those cases, the law says concerning murder specifically and others, we have to keep the physical file. And so those files are being stored in a storage place locally. So we have those ongoing costs. And then you have your ongoing costs for the software that we put all of those cases into. And so that software cost is there. But then you have the two thousand thirteen cases up until where we are that the individuals are still continuing to scan in that were not a part of that forty or four thousand boxes that came under this commission or in front of this commission years ago. And so that is ongoing. They are moving forward. We have an entire process that's set up. I, at this point, I know that we still need those. If we don't have those folks, then my staff who's doing the legal work will have to do that stuff. And that would pull them away from the many cases that they, they are at. I can't give you an exact how long it's going to take to get it done, but I do know that before this commission approved for the digitalization. for the digitalization process to happen, they were going all the way back into the 90s. And so we were able to stop them at 2013 and send everything else to the company who was able to do those things.
So, and the storage is no longer in our public buildings, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, Mark. Entry level attorney right out of law school coming to work with, what is the entry's salary? I'm just curious.
83,000, I believe, between.
You would start someone right out of law school at 83,000?
Yes. And our partnering DA's office are starting them at 120. Right out of law school.
Thank you.
Meaning other DA's offices within the, the region? Yeah, compared to others. And so, but, and that 83,000 to 86,000, again, is because this commission saw that eight years ago, we were the lowest paid assistant district or district attorney's office in the state of Kansas, bringing our new ADAs in at 48,000 dollars. And, and, and that's why we had such a high rate of turnover. But at that 83 to 86,000, I tie that into the experience that you're going to get. You may go up the road to make an extra 20 or 30,000 dollars, but it'll take 10 years to get the experience you'll get here for three years. Thank you for that question.
Thank you, Commissioner Kane, for getting that reason for him for the years.
Thank you, Commissioner Kane.
We actually get along.
We do.
I get along with you too, Commissioner. I got one last question. Sheriff, if you can just come back up, this hit me. And have we looked, and this is for each of you, have we looked at any innovations, any best practices, any type of streamlining, any type of things that maybe, maybe other agencies are doing around the country that could bring about cost savings? For example, when I was on the police department, and I like to reflect back, when we were trying to cut costs, we just looked at how we did business, not just who we are. And some of you heard that, but who can we be and how can we improve the efficiency while also providing the quality and the level of service that our residents have come to demand and expect? One of the things we looked at is call taking. You know, do we want to take the lawnmower call? Or do we want to have those people walk that in? Should that be a priority call that we tie an officer up for a half hour to 45 minutes on? Or can they walk those types of, of calls in? And as far as savings that may, that may be there. There were other things that we did that brought about efficiencies, streamlining our, our bureaus. We went from having a major over one of each of the four bureaus to cut, cut it down to we had a major over two bureaus. Instead of having captain on each shift, we had a captain that covered two troll stations to, to save money. I mean, we really dug deep, looked at our, our vehicle purchases and leasing options and things like that to really just streamline our, our, our operations in a way that brought about efficiencies that resulted in cost savings to, to the taxpayer ultimately. But also didn't degrade or diminish the, the, the quality and level of service that our residents, you know, that we were required to provide. Is there anything, when you talk about, I know that we're digitizing things, we're, we're updating computers and programs and licensing and things. Are there any efficiencies that can be had from any of these, these new technologies that can maybe require less personnel? Or just bring about efficiencies that where you can divert personnel that you have to other areas to maybe mitigate the need for increased staffing? I, I mean, I don't know, that's a question. I, I know a lot of corporates are doing those types of things and, and they're looking at a lot of ways to, to operate more efficiently. I'm just not, I've been out of the law enforcement career for about going on seven years now. I just don't know, I haven't kept track of what, what new technology innovations or best practices that other agencies may be doing across the country.
So, you know, the biggest thing we look at is our processes that affect other agencies specifically. So we always look at detention, the faster we can get officers out, back on the street, they're, they're being more effective to those cities or jurisdictions. As far as reducing of people, you know, we historically have never been an agency that had an overabundance of either administrative or clerk type jobs. And so that was never something we could ever reduce anyway. As far as technology goes, we, we always look for technology that can make it better and faster and cheaper. The unfortunate part, and I should have brought this up when Commissioner Burns was asking about the software for the jail. So technology has gotten expensive and that number actually has got to what it's got. Because that has been, that's a purchase that's been put off for a couple of years and it just keeps growing, growing in cost. Even if we did that today though, that doesn't reduce the need for any of our people. It doesn't, you know, it's not really a cost savings. It may be a little bit of a time savings. But that's, I mean, that's really about it. As far as vehicle purchases and stuff like that, we, we look high and low. Obviously, we, we go with the contractual prices that we're able to get. We've leased a few vehicles in, in a few, in a division that, that it makes sense. It doesn't make sense for us to lease the entire fleet. But yes, to your question, anywhere that we can save, we have worked to save. But, but our personnel, we just have never had the extras to begin with. So unfortunately, they've always done more with less as far as people.
And DA, maybe you could, same question, but maybe you can help me, both of you. I know there was a fund. We recovered so much drugs, contraband, those types of things. Once it was released, some of that money went back to the law enforcement agencies. I don't know if that program is still in effect. What that dollar amount may look like.
Talking about the law enforcement trust fund?
That, and there was another fund as well that, but.
So historically, our agency hasn't gotten involved in a lot of situations where we've been able to get money off of cases. We've had a few. We do have a deputy assigned to a task force now that eventually will recover some, some drug money. But that hasn't, that hasn't come to fruition for us just yet. So our law enforcement trust fund is pretty, is pretty bare. Historically, it has been. And so that's, that's not something that for us is, is a, is a windfall by any, by any means.
So that goes, the, the cert team, is that, is it, is that just for jail or is that?
Just for, just for jail. Yep.
So the only drug funding situation the DA's office is a part of is concerning the one that I spoke of with the opioid and the lawsuit and things of that sort. So beyond that, the other process that we have is forfeitures. And that is something that is brought by the Kansas City Kansas Police Department mostly. And then because we handle the case, we'll get a certain percentage of that. And so it's, it's a smaller amount versus the Kansas City Kansas Police Department. And, and I can respect the reasoning why. I mean, they, they bring it and so. And then that falls under a lot of statutory restraints on what can be done with it, what can't be done with it, where it can go and how it can go. And so many times those funds, whatever we get in, we usually just end up sitting somewhere because we're either forbidden by statutory to do it or I haven't been confident enough to spend it without feeling like I may not be able to withstand some, some issues in the future. So, so that's it. But I would, I would like to say, because the sheriff is up here concerning the technology, there was a question asked whether or not the equipment or the software that he's getting will work with the DA's office. If the sheriff's department is looking at the same equipment or software that the police department has, then the answer is yes. So right now, what they have in all of the agencies, the way that they submit cases to our office is through a software, a portal that comes into our, our software system. And with that, when we purchased our software a couple of years back, we purchased every law enforcement, a, a portal so that they can upload things directly into our software specifically for submitted cases. And I know that the sheriff's department already does that. And so whatever software he gets, as long as it's in the same vein as the police department who also does it, excuse me, I don't foresee any problem with that.
Thank you. And that's what I was looking for was asset forfeitures and as the law enforcement trust fund. I wanted you all to, to speak to that. That's what my memory bought. But then also grants, I know there's grants out there. I don't know how active your agencies are in, in going after grants. And I know it's, it's probably going to dry up here a little bit. But just historically going back, I just didn't know. I didn't see any of those numbers here reflected in anything as far as asset forfeitures. Those dollars are what that reflected in the dollars as well as the law enforcement trust fund. I know that's out there somewhere. So I wanted to, to basically ask that. But then our budget director, do we have somewhere that reflects those dollars in, in the budget that may be set aside for general purpose for, for our public safety professionals?
So we, we do have a whole section within the budget document that does cover grants that the unified government covers. And then in District Attorney DePree's budget and then Sheriff Soptick's budget, on their department page, it does show funding that they also do get from grants also.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about asset forfeitures and the law enforcement trust fund. I mean, even with the police department, I'm just, apologies if I overlooked it. I just didn't see it. I just wanted, is that part of the budget documents?
Yeah, it, it, it would be in the, within the budget document also. Special law enforcement trust fund portions that both of them receive.
And, and I would also say just specifically in concern of that, whatever is there concerning us, I would make sure that you all attach my description of the statutory mandates concerning those type of spendings and, and what's there. So it's not something that we can just say, okay, we can use this to do something with. It has to be based off of what the law says. But I, I would say specifically concerning grants, since you brought it up. And, and I think my, my colleague to the left, Commissioner Kane, was going to ask this question. And so the DA's office did go after, as I stated earlier, some viral grants that was able to bring in a sex crime prosecutor as well as a victim's advocate. And that grant brought in 166,000 dollars for us to, to deal with those two individuals. We also were able through the opioid, and we'll just call that a grant, to receive 180,000 that also allowed us to bring in a coordinator as well as an additional victim's advocate. Again, these funds are not a part of your general budget there. Then lastly, we were able in connection with AdHoc Against Crime to receive a 680,000 dollar grant that allowed us to pay for victims of crime in our community to get assistance. One of the biggest costs that we deal with are, are, are not our office, but in our community is when the police are called out, say someone's car has been broken into or a house has been kicked in. Once the police do their thing, they try to find the suspect and they go on about their day. Well, that mom, that dad has to take their children back inside that house. The door is broken, the window is shot out, the car is shot to pieces. And there is no fun to help these individuals or to help with medical bills and so on and so forth. This 680,000 dollars has helped us be able to provide immediate funds to send contractors out immediately in the middle of the night through AdHoc Against Crime to, to deal with, to board up that window, to take that car to the shop, to get those bullet holes out of the, the house and to help these people to change the lock so that these families can be safe. And so these grants are ways that, that this administration has went above and beyond just coming to you all and asking for funds, but trying to find additional ways. And with that 680,000 dollars, we were able to work with the AdHoc Against Crime, Governor Kelly's office, along with the, the Department of Justice to make that happen. And so we continue to advocate for grants and look for grants and try to find those ways to fill in gaps so that I don't have to ask for any more money that necessary based off of our personnel.
And that's really good to hear. I know me coming from public safety, a lot of initiatives that we had on the police department, positions, things of that nature, we actually saved the UG money by just going after grants and funded a lot of those. So it's good to, it's encouraging to hear you say that. Sheriff, I don't really know if that's part of your initiative. But I know DOJ cops grants, there's a lot of state, federal, as well as some private grants to really help law enforcement, a lot of initiatives, community policing grants. I know there's a lot of social service grants that, that it appears may be cut. But it appears that law enforcement and public safety in effect may not be on the chopping block, but I don't know. But that's just some for consideration.
Yeah, and so we, same thing for us. You know, probably the bigger struggle we have with the, with the grant topic is a lot of them, and I, I can't speak for the DA's world, but a lot of them tend to be the matching grant. And so you gotta be prepared and, and have the budget there existing to match that. And in the occasion, we find ones that are full, those are even better. But as you very well know, there's a whole lot of people trying to get, to get that money. But yeah, no, absolutely. We, we go off after everything we can.
Thank you. Commissioner Kane.
You brought up what I wanted to bring up, which was the grants. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Bynum Metlarch one. Mr. DA, thank you for being here and answering all of our questions. I have questions about the document we were given. And so I'm gonna need help from your finance team and our budget folks. So if we start at the top, I'm looking at what I think is the first entire page being the community integrity unit. Am I reading that correctly? The very first line is community integrity unit, 437,000. And then when you get to the very bottom of that page, those numbers add down to total 437,000. So am I reading that first page correctly? That that entire first page is the community integrity unit?
That is correct. And, and the first line is, is, is the total budget for the unified government?
Very first line is the total budget. And then the next itemized line is the community integrity at 437,000. And then that adds down to the total at the bottom, 437,000. So I'm guessing that entire section is all community integrity unit. I just want to make sure I'm reading through this correctly. Cause if that, if that's true, that makes sense to me. That, that whole section separated out, community integrity unit, and then within it, operations fringe contractual commodities.
That is correct.
Rolls up to the 437. Okay. And then the next page, the first topic line says DA diversion. And its total is 290,909 dollars. And I don't. And then it rolls down to operations total about a little bit below the middle of the page that matches a 290,909. So that's another chunk of your budget that we are calling DA diversion. So I either don't know what that is or there's maybe a typo. I don't know what DA diversion.
Sorry, forgive me. Two things. One, the, the way that budget puts their thing together is not the way that my inner office accounting operates. So as, as you're learning how they're putting it together in, in their software, that's how they have it set up and we try to comply as much as we can. But our inner office accounting is. But our inner-office accounting is different. Now, diversion is the ability for an individual who has committed a crime, who has low criminal history or no criminal history, to rather than being convicted of the crime, they are given a contract, I'm just trying to make it real clear, between the DA's office and that individual for a certain amount of time, let's say 18 months. If they stay out of trouble and don't commit crime for that 18 months, then that case is dismissed. But my office monitors them. So they're put on, for lack of better terms, a probation before a conviction. And if they do that, then the case goes away, but our office still had to handle that entire diversion. So that diversion, what we're calling diversion unit, is literally just a part of my personnel, right? So I have multiple people in my office who deal with, via the non-attorneys, who deal with those contracts. But then I have all of my attorneys who have the ability and authority to put a defendant who fits those guidelines on a diversion, right? So it's not a per se diversion unit, but it is something that we do that multiple people handle. And the non-attorney staff, I have personnel that deal strictly with that, whereas attorneys go more broadly. So those fundings that are there are being utilized for that, as well as dealing with the attorneys and what comes with it.
I appreciate that. So, because the way I'm reading these budget pages for your division is kind of in those chunks that I'm calling chunks. Because the next one, if you go, after you see the operations total for DA diversion at 290,000, the next big one is the District Attorney Division at 8 million. And so that's the bulk of your budget. I'm so sorry if you're not seeing what I'm seeing.
Yeah, but I'm going to catch up with you. No need to apologize. Are you on the second page still?
Still on the second page, just a little below the middle. So District Attorney Division, and it's coming in at 8 million.
So that's the total amount for the office?
Okay. And I'm looking, I'm just, I just kind of keep trying to roll down to the bottom to, actually what I'm trying to do is figure out the subtotals that total the total. And so...
And Madam Commissioner, I'm going to ask Budget to explain where they're putting this at because the, my attorneys, I think majority of my attorneys, they've put in what's been labeled as that chunk, District Attorney Division, right?
Seeing that as the salaries there are 5.2 million. So that makes sense to me, what you're saying, that that's the bulk of your department. What I'm trying to get at is, if you go to the very bottom, operations total, right above the grand total page, Reggie, the line directly above it, operations total at 7.9 million, that must be your District Attorney Division. And if I add the 7.9 plus the 290 for the diversion category, plus the 437 for the Community Integrity Unit, is that how I get to 8.8 million?
So, Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director. So I helped put these together. I'll just kind of explain how they...
Thank you.
So, and we did try to attach like just a very generic sheet to the notice that went out. But basically, these are organized by department at the highest level. The next level that you're seeing, which would be DA diversion, conviction integrity unit, and the district attorney's division, those are divisions. So those are the highest sub-operating unit within the district attorney's office. And then we have funds within that. So if a department has multiple funds that are operating within those divisions, then those are subtitled. And then within each fund, we have the cost centers, which the cost center is kind of the smallest personnel operating unit in Workday or in our Enterprise Resource Planning System. So basically, the cost center is the smallest level that is staffed at the unified government. And that would be where you see like a CC 00038 District Attorney. So that would be one of our cost centers. And then within each cost center, we can have multiple programs. So the programs are not department-specific. So you'll see operations a lot. Operations is just a catch-all for basic operations. But within the District Attorney's Cost Center, the first subgroup there is Program 132, Medical Exam Sex Offenders. So Commissioner Hill, when you were talking about the Sex Offenders budget, that $135,000 there, that would be the number that you were asking about. But where we have specific items that we want to track within a cost center that are not personnel-specific necessarily, or across the unified government, then we have programs identified for those. So for instance, for the DA Division, you see the $8 million. That is a buildup of the District Attorney Cost Center, which is again the 8.09. And then within that, you have the Medical Exam Sex Offenders Program at 135, and then the Operations Program at 7.95. And that adds up to the District Attorney's Cost Center. It adds up to the County General Fund portion of that, the division. And then the DA diversion, the Community Conviction Integrity, yeah, Community Integrity Unit and the DA Division all add up to the...
Very helpful. That is very helpful. And DA Dupree, just a question. Within the District Attorney Division part, that last part, that's the big 8 million part, a couple, and again, I recognize that you're, that it's the way we put your budget together, if you will. You've got a line on page three, middle, under 52000, Contractual Services, okay? SC 043 is Rent/lease Software for 242,000. And so I have that one. And then below it is SC 067, Temporary Employment Services for 145,000. So my question is, the software, that must be something entirely different than your digitization stuff, because it's in a different part of your budget as well as the Temporary Employment Services. Must not be referencing what the slide says, which is that you've used a lot of temporary employment for the digitization because it's sitting in the general DA Division part of the budget. And again, it might be the way we've put your budget together. But I'm just curious.
No, and thank you for the question. And I will tell you that, one, I believe that the confusion is coming in slightly because of the way it's put together. But in concern of the actual contractual aspect, let's start there. The software that I spoke about earlier in concern of the digitalization that occurred, well, we had to purchase a software to store all of those things in the cloud. And then we had to purchase another software to be able to go through that software to connect with our office software. So for instance, CarpeL is our management system, and that falls into that contractual line. And that's $102,000. And then we also have Lexis, which is the legal software that we utilize to look up the law concerning our cases. And that's an additional $20,000. And then for the storage that we have to purchase, or you know, to put all of our stuff in the clouds, is an additional 9,000. And then the system that imported all of those 50, 60 years of files is called Laserfish, and that's an additional $60,000 or $16,000. And then we have what's called Regis, which is utilized by Unified Government, the Kansas City Kansas Police Department, the Sheriff's. There are multiple other things that are on, but I won't go on. But these are all of those contractual obligations. And it falls, it's more than that. So, right, oftentimes what we find at the end of the year is we have to move money to take care of some of these contractual obligations that we need to move forward. Going to the second line that you discussed is the Temporary Employment. That falls into, if you recall, Commissioner, before we did the digitalization project at one point, whatever million it was, this commission had given us four temporary employees to be able to start scanning. And that's, or those rather, are the employees that I was speaking about earlier with Commissioner Burrows' comment of what are we doing now? So the 50, 60 years prior to 2013 are taken care of. But we are now down from four or five to three? Three, that 145 are three employees that are, we're saying temporary because they don't get benefits at all, but they are there 40 hours of the week. And their job is to continue to digitize from 2013 all the way up until where we are in 2025. And so that 145 is that temporary aspect. So it's separate and apart from the digitalization project, but it was birthed before.
Oh, okay, thank you. And I really appreciate that. I was really working hard to make this math work for me.
Absolutely, I understand.
Appreciate. You can, you can give me that specificity, given that, you know, we've presented your budget in a way that's different than you do. And I know that these software contracts are outrageously expensive.
They are, and they continue to go up. And it's horrible, but we may do what we have to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. And DA Dupree, I do appreciate the advocacy for your people, right? Which I would expect that if any department had to do that, it's a very difficult position to be in. The 760,000 you are asking for an increase in personnel costs, is that a hard, fast number that it is? Absolutely, that is what's needed. Or is there possibility to negotiate and go a little bit lower for this year?
Yes, that is a hard number. And in fact, I'd need it more, but we were able to get to that number. And again, this number comes after being able to have fielded our positions. As I stated earlier, I have my dear colleagues who are paying $20,000 more to take my folks. This number does not put my folks at the highest number that I can pay them according to my scale. But it is at a number that is, still keeps us competing. And so without this minimally, we wouldn't be able to handle the cases that we handle. So there is, there is no room. Now, I will tell you that what I did do is we took away two full-time assistant district attorney positions, and we replaced them with four intern positions because we needed to put the bodies in place. And interns are able to get their temporary attorney's license. And so with that funding that was only for two, we made four. And we continue to have those four to continue to handle those cases. And so that number that we are at is the bottom line that I could operate effectively with. And again, having already done all that I could to, to ask for just that.
Understood, understood. It's to remain competitive throughout the metro and quite frankly, throughout the nation. There's not just the metrowide, but really kind of a national shortage of lawyers that I'm sure you all are not immune to. Last thing I'll just ask and just say this, we have a lot of folks that have said, you know, we're talking between the DA's office and the sheriff's office, we're talking about over half of the county budget. And there have been a lot of claims made about people not getting value for their tax dollar and people feeling as though we are just frivolously spending dollars. We are irresponsibly spending dollars. Not my comments, not my words, but those words were said. I say that to say between, you know, you, DA Dupree, Sheriff Sopik, please work with us, and I know you all are already doing this. Work with us to tell the story of the value that folks are getting for their taxpayer dollar. Because I think when people see behind the vote, behind revenue neutral, behind all those things, we are seeing what I would consider to be impactful work that is keeping our community safe and improving the quality of life. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that. And if you would allow me, I will paint a quick picture. And that quick picture is, safety of our community should be paramount. The safety of every human being that lives in this community, the very thing that we hope compels people to come to this community, to live, to invest, to build up, whether it's big company or mom and pop who wants to retire here, they're looking at two things. One, the crime. Two, the schools. When we're looking at this thing, the police department, the sheriff's department, law enforcement, the court, and yes, the district attorney's office, the one who carries the ball to the finish line, are paramount. And it is different than every other agency and every other organization and every other department because safety affects all of us. It's not a choice. It's not something that we get to choose to dibble in or not. And in the last three years, we have had a decrease in crime with over 27% concerning our violent crime and over a 60% decrease concerning our murders in the last 10 years. So what picture do I need to paint? I need to paint that in collaboration with our sheriff's department and our Kansas City Kansas Police Department and the DA's office and the court, crime is decreasing. That makes this community more effective, more desirable. And quite frankly, for me and my beautiful wife and four children, more pleasant and safe for us to live in and make us want to stay here. So as you do your job and handle all of the many citizens who have things to say, it is important that you know that no one wants to start a business in a crime-written location. No one wants to invest millions of dollars where the murder rate continues to go higher and higher. But because of the effectiveness of your law enforcement here, that is not the case, and it continues to, I've heard the word multiple times, trend downward. There needs to be a picture painted. Paint a picture of crime and murder trending down because that is what we're doing. And that is why we need to continue to fund this office, the court, the sheriff's department, and the police department. Thank you so much, Commissioners, Sir Mayor. And if you have nothing else for me, I would love to get out of this seat.
I know you would. I got a question. Hit on what you said, and I'll end it with this. It's a make, you said $48,000 for an attorney? Is that what you started with?
Eighty-three thousand. It used to be 48,000.
Eighty-three thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
How does that compare nationally with the average attorney?
Average attorneys, they're coming out on average at 95,000.
95,000. To go to law school today as a young person, and the cost associated, what's that average? And on the law school?
We're not paying them enough to pay their student loans, if that's what you're asking.
That's pretty much where I'm going. It's over $100,000?
Yes, it's over, it was over $100,000 when I went, and that was nearly two decades ago.
Wow. And so you're asking young people to come out and 85,000, but there's still burden shackled with student loans. I'm sure that they're going to be hanging off for probably a couple of decades, am I correct?
That's correct.
So when you talk about being competitive and trying to get the best folks out of these law schools to do this type of work, which is, you know, a lot of work when you talk about what you all do day in and day out. about what you all do day in and day out. Attorney can go do corporate, they can do injury law, or they can make a lot of money. And so this is something that really people have to want to do and are passionate about. And I think that is an added challenge for you as well, wouldn't you say, for the DA?
I would say.
And so I, I just go in line, I've always said that a, a safe, safe Kansas City, Kansas makes for a great Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County for that effect. A lot of people may wonder why public safety, the majority, and help me out, Budget Director, how much of the budget, unified government budget goes towards public safety when you talk about the courts, the DA, the sheriff, and the police department?
I want to say it was maybe-
Regent Lindsay, Unified Government Budget Director, somewhere between a sixty and seventy percent range.
And I think the DA hit on something really profound. And I used to say this when I was on the police department. Folks that I dealt with when I was on the police department, I mean, they'll deal with bad politicians that they don't like. They'll deal with potholes, they'll deal with swings that don't work. But what they're not going to deal with is unsafe, an unsafe community. Homicides, robberies, all the things that come with that, or fire department that they call and the response times are low. They're going to take their tax dollars, they're going to move somewhere else. I mean, people will not tolerate an unsafe community. And I believe if you look nationally, that, that cost, that sixty percent and maybe plus, depending on the city or county or community, Budget Director, I think we're in line with most communities when you talk about public safety being at the, you know, the major cost for most municipal governments.
That is correct.
Okay. So we're not out of alignment. I know a lot of folks talk about why we spend so much on safety. Well, that's why. Safety is the backbone of our society. And again, if people don't feel safe in a community, they will take their families and they will leave. Businesses will shutter and people that may even consider about doing business in a community will say, no, not there. And you can just look at some communities across this nation that suffer with that. So I, I've continued to be a strong advocate and supporter of public safety and the investment in public safety and the great men and women throughout that apparatus and ecosystem here of public safety professionals, they do a, a great job. And so it is valued. And when you talk about the DA only making up nine percent, I need, I think we need to take a pause and really look at that and look at what we are paying the attorneys, look at his staffing, and look at his willingness to work with this unified government to get to that budget. Again, I'm sure the DA could use a lot more, but the work is a necessary need that we have in this community. And there's a national discourse going on now about the National Guard coming to this community. And I told someone earlier that it's safe to say with the, the violent crime drop here, with the relationship between our sheriff, our DA, our police department, and our national and state partners, historic lows here in violent crime. So the only National Guard or any troops that would come in here would be on Veterans' Day and a parade, and I would welcome them to do just that. So thank you, Brother DA. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank all of you Commissioners for allowing me to be here. May I be excused?
I can't say no to the DA.
Thank you.
Regent Lindsay, Unified Government Budget Director. The next department we're going to have overview for is the Register of Deeds. The total county budget, the Register of Deeds is nine hundred and three thousand of that. They have seven employees. Their budget is eighty percent personnel and twenty percent contractual services. Also, they make up less than one percent of the tax levy on the county, county side. And then they also make up less than one percent in the county general fund. Some key things about the Register of Deeds is eighty-two percent is funded by the county general fund, with the remaining eighteen percent coming from the Register of Deeds Technology Fund, which covers most of their software costs. Also contractual services account for twenty percent of their budget, of which eighteen percent is software. This leaves only two percent for other operating costs and one percent for commodities. And we have our Register of Deeds who just joined us. Open it up for any questions or-
Welcome, you want to do, it's just a real short present.
I'm Suzy Nelson, I'm the Register of Deeds. Our office is a revenue generating office, and our revenue goes into the general fund. And all our fees are dictated by state statute. We did, in the last four years, we have a search program that the public uses when they come in, it's free. We use it, and then a lot of our departments use it. And then we have subscriptions to title companies and attorneys. And we pushed one point three million, excuse me, documents in our, our, our search program. And since we did that in the last four years, I took a look at our fees that we're charging for the subscription, and our searchers can go back now to nineteen fifty-five. And so they don't have to come in the office if they have that subscription. And I, I increased the subscription from two hundred dollars a month to four hundred dollars a month. So that's generating more revenue. Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Burnham.
Thank you, Mayor. Register of Deeds, Suzy, thank you. Thank you for your office and what you do. You've been particularly helpful to me personally in the last few months as we work through these losses I've experienced, and you've answered my questions very promptly. And I do want to express to you how much I appreciate that. And by the way, your predecessor also was excellent, I have to say that.
Thank you.
It's absolutely-
Happy to help.
So I did want to say thank you, but I had a question, I think you may have just answered because when I've been in your office transacting business over the last few months, I've paid fees.
Yes.
And so are those fees also what you're referencing that go into the county general fund?
Yes.
Okay. And when we look at our line item detail of the budgets, I don't, unless Reggie, maybe you can tell me, I don't really see revenue. It's more of an expense budget. And so I don't know if you know by chance.
Like off the top of my head, last year, I think we collected one point two million dollars, a little over that.
You're generating more than your department is expending.
Yes.
Thank you, that's it.
Commissioner Davis?
Very quickly, just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you so much. We do have, what I'm hoping everything goes well, the KCK Homes for Generations Program, I hope you work with our clerk's office together. Okay, Monica is shaking her head, because that program will help particularly our seniors that are lower income with title issues and some other issues that can lead to probate court. And so I just want to thank you so much for your willingness to, to help us and launch that pilot hopefully in 2026, fingers crossed. And thank you for attending our senior resource fair that we had in my district. Heard from a lot of folks just regarding the, particularly the property fraud alert that, that you're doing for awareness. So just thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sure, happy to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burns?
Yeah, Suzy, I continue to get compliments about how customer-friendly your office is and willing to help someone come in. You can't tell them what to do, you can't give them legal advice, but you sure can guide them in, in the right direction. And I get compliments all, all the time about that.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
If there was a mortgage registration fee now, and I know there isn't now because the bankers took it over, and that, how much money would that, would you think it would generate here in Wyandotte County?
I, I believe we lost like a million dollars when that was taken away.
So Wyandotte County lost a million dollars when that statute got passed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe you could tell me. What, what, you said you're, you generate funds, what, what, what does that look like?
So like when somebody comes in to record a document?
I mean, what's the total, I mean-
It, it varies per document, like, like-
Here, if you were to, if you were, if you were to collate how much revenue you bring in annually, what would that look like?
Approximately, just from the, I'd say about eight hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Roughly, yeah.
If you look at total county budget, it's always good to have a department, pretty much pays for itself. And so I, I, I share with what our Commissioners say, you all do excellent work. The, the feedback I get from the community is the high level of customer service that the Register of Deeds office provides to residents. It's, 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 I, I have yet to have anyone tell me or complain about customer service in the Register of Deeds. It is unparalleled. And, and one of those departments, you know, of several in this unified government, where you know, if you go to the Register of Deeds, you're going to get high-quality customer service from some great staff members. And so I just want to commend you and your staff for that, just being that, that department that really exemplifies excellence in customer service because that is one of the, the, the high points that when people talk about departments and people talk about your department and just how warm and welcoming and that all their answers are met to their satisfaction. And then I want to commend also the work that you all do, and I know some of it's driven by this commission, but it's always good to have a, a department that really pretty much funds itself. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next department we're going to have budget overview for is our Elections Office. Total county budget for Elections Office is two point three million dollars. They have eleven and a half employees. Their budget is fifty-four percent personnel, twenty percent of that is capital outlay, nineteen percent of that is contractual services of percent of tax levy on the county side. They do make up two percent. They don't get any funding from the county general fund. Some of the highlights with their 2026 CIP is they're going to have facility upgrades in an amount of three hundred and five thousand dollars. They're going to have website migration and phone migration, both totaling a hundred thousand dollars. And then they'll have computer replacement program of thirty-five thousand dollars. Some of the key things to think about with the Elections Office is Elections Workers have transitioned from contractual to temporary employees that have shifted the cost from contractual services to personnel. The Elections Office would like to increase employee pay for Elections Workers to fifteen dollars an hour and extend early voting. The largest expenses in their operating budget includes software maintenance and storage of equipment, as well as printing and post-districtual elections. And Elections Commissioner is here to fill any questions and tell you about their operation also.
Before we go to that, is, if my memory serves me correct, maybe, excuse my ignorance, the Elections Office employer, are those UG employees, I take it?
Michael Abbott, Elections Commissioner, we have ten full-time employees and about three hundred and fifty Elections Workers.
I, I believe that this commission passed something, I believe my first year as a mayor, off my recommendation to move everyone up to fifteen dollars an hour. I just, did, did you miss the boat on that or, or what happened?
No, my, the Elections Workers were paid as contract contractors. That changed to hourly employees. And so with that, we're asking them to be changed at the fifteen. I think there's confusion on a lot of people's parts. I'll, I'll take responsibility too. We were told that they weren't eligible to do that fifteen dollars an hour. And so I just think there is some confusion with it, but I want to get them at the fifteen dollars an hour now because it's really going to help us with recruiting, it's going to help keep the Elections Workers that we have now, and without them, we just, we simply can't run elections.
I believe, I believe that's correct, somebody from staff, I believe that was something this commission advocated and approved? I don't know. But any UG employee, I know that's something I advocated for and this commission agreed and actually wanted more, but I think they did set the minimum salary for any UG employee to be fifteen dollars an hour. You know, you've got folks working at fast food restaurants making more than that. And I just thought it was deplorable when I came in as mayor that we had people making the federal minimum wage. When, you know, you've got kids making a lot more than that, we're asking professionals to do work every day. The minimum should have been fifteen dollars an hour. I just need clarity for that question before I turn it over to our Elections. Is that, is that factual or something changed, staff? Or, or is that something that he needs to worry about when you talk about that fifteen dollars an hour?
So one of the things that Commissioner Abbott did mention was that when that fif- when, when that fifteen dollars was granted, their employees were contract employees at that point in time. And then when they came over as actual employees of the unified government, went into their pay scale, that particular pay scale hadn't been adjusted to the fifteen dollars an hour because it didn't exist at that point in time. So now it needs to be adjusted to that, to bring it up to that amount.
So we're not asking for, we're just asking for a pay adjustment to, to reflect them being full-time employees as opposed to we want fifteen dollars an hour? Okay, that, that makes it clear for me. Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Abbott. I'll let you make your opening remarks.
That's all I was really going to say is that the, we were just trying to get them to the fifteen dollars an hour. We're having a difficult time trying to retain some of the Elections Workers, and I think this would really help. Not to mention when it was talked about on the news when this first got approved for the fifteen dollars an hour, we had a lot of workers coming to us saying, where's our fifteen dollars an hour at? We had a lot of them drop out because of it. So with, with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Well, let's circle back on that question. I believe this commission approved any employee to be fifteen dollars an hour irrespective of part-time, full-time, whatever. That's why I asked you, were these UG employees, you know? Because I believe this commission, and correct me if I'm wrong Commissioners, we approved any, any worker of this unit, the minimum salary would be fifteen dollars an hour. And I hate to hear that may, and I don't know, I, I would, I would hate to hear that some employees may have been left behind or left the organization because they weren't, they weren't getting what this commission approved them to be entitled to. But I don't know, that's a question.
Yeah, there were several Elections Workers that did not return and stated that they were leaving because they thought they were going to get that pay increase, and they did not. So, and, and just to be clear, when, when that did get passed, I didn't have the budget to even cover it, so.
Okay. Commissioner King?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, obviously, we need to adjust to the fifteen dollars because that's what we, what we've talked about, voted on and, and all that. And another thing, the Elections Results, we're getting them so fast, we never got them as fast as we're getting them now. And we appreciate the folk that you two guys do and, and the folks that work for you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Burnham.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the very recent past election and the great job that, that you and all the team did. I just want to clarify, when, Reggie, when we talk about the, the Elections Office is not funded out of the county general fund, which I think I heard you say, it's funded because it's got its own tax levy. I want to, I want you to say that back to me correctly.
That is correct. It does have its own tax levy and it's fully funded.
So for the public, what that means is that number one, it's mandated by state law that we fund our local Elections Office and everything they need to conduct elections, but it's a fraction of a mill, basically. It's a, it's a portion of a mill that gets directed directly to elections. And you can say that back to me correctly.
That is, that is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Burroughs.
Gentlemen, did we get the issue resolved about the funding from last year? I know some of that, there may have been some concern about it being HAVA dollars. And did, did we get that issue resolved to satisfaction so we're not going to find ourselves in a point of penalty?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we did. We got that money back in our fund just a few weeks ago.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, what are the capital improvements?
So right now, we have air conditioners at our, at the Elections Office that are, the, the team is having a hard time to get parts for them. They're saying they need replaced. So some of that is for replacement of air conditioning units. So some of that is for replacement of air conditioning units. But also the main thing is the training room that we need down in the basement. Right now, we're doing training in the warehouse where our equipment is at. We have to have makeshift little walls for our little training area. And it's interrupting our early voting. And so most of that is for a training room where the election workers actually have a room where we can train them and keep them away from the public, so.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Burroughs.
Yeah, I'd just like to tell both of you, just like the registered deeds office, I get compliments about how courteous, the courtesy that be anyone that comes in there and you give them good advice, you know, and tell them what they can or what they can't do or, you know, whatever. And it's just a good PR thing. And I want to commend both of you and, and your staff for doing that. It's, it's always a friendly atmosphere when you go in there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got two questions and a request. Question, I know that, I believe it's Commissioner Davis, Standing Committee, shortly will be looking at two sales tax initiatives to go on the ballot. What does that cost, just for anybody that, to be able to do that?
As long as it's on the general election or on election where there's a county-wide race, there is no cost to the county.
Okay, all right. That's a, I'm sure people wanted to know, and so thank you for that answer. The, the other comment I'd like to make is just, this, this commission has spoken, they voted, they passed. I would just, administrator asks that we make sure, if you can direct staff who's ever assigned, there should never be a situation where any employee is underpaid, not paid what this commission has authorized for them to be paid. So we just need to make sure that that is budgeted appropriately moving forward. I just, I hate to hear stuff like that and hear employees leave or them say, you're not paying me what this commission said and authorize them to be paid. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Opitz.
Yes, sir. This was one, did, did the mapping issue get resolved as far as being updated? I know there was some serious questions and then everybody's pointing, pointing their crosshairs at you and I think it was mapping that was needing updated. And kind of explain, you know, like, would you say every ten years, I think, some districts are changed around?
Yeah, thank you for the question. It's every ten years, there's a census. And in twenty twenty-two, we, we had redistricting. So there was some folks that got a little confused because their district was no longer in District Five, it's in District Eight. But when they went on to the Unified Government's website to check the maps to see where they were at, it was still showing them in District Five when in fact they were in District Eight. So those maps did get updated, I think they were updated a few days ago.
I, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Mr. Abbott, appreciate you.
Yep, thank you.
I'm Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director. I'm going to go through the next department summary. Legislative Auditor is the next department we have coming forward. So total budget for Legislative Auditor is seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six. That's six positions that's funded within that budget. The largest cost category is personnel, ninety percent, all back in contractual commodities, which makes up the rest of the, the budget. Of the budget, legislative auditor makes up less than one percent of the whole UG tax levy. We did combine city and county funds since it's a cross-funded department and less than one percent of the UG general funds. The only change that we made to their budget this year outside of the position realignment was increased cost for Adobe subscriptions, just as of the way that software companies are changing their costing practices. Seen that across the UG. Previous years, Legislative Auditor was only funded through the county general fund, but since the department deals with both city and county functions, we've split it seventy percent, city thirty percent and county for the, the most recent budgets. And eighty percent of their operating budget is designated for the ethics administration program.
Good evening. Let's see, Auditor's Office is authorized under the charter and under the direction of, or I'm appointed by Chief Judge Burns and a majority of the district court judges. We perform internal performance audit functions as well as the ethics administration program. As Michael mentioned, our budget is at seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. This time last year was eight hundred and sixty thousand. We, we have a one, we're down one FTE for this, for this twenty twenty-six budget. The ethics program, you see the, the blue slice, almost all of that blue, blue slice there is the ethics program. So our operating costs, if you consider that, go down to about two percent.
Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Burroughs?
I just want to state that when, when I was first elected, I had requested six-month prior audits before I took office. I think I've read every audit that has come out of your department in eight years. And some of them are very well done or to the point, very succinct. And anytime I've ever called over with questions, your staff has been not only expedient in getting the response back, but was also very good at getting the answers that, that I was seeking at the time. When I go to pitch them out of my thing, there's a lot of yellow notes and stick them to all the pages that I had questions and concerns about, but I just really wanted to say thank you to your staff for the expediency, the thoroughness and the transparency you provided me as a, as a commissioner here at Unified Government.
Well, thank you. I, I would also say that an internal performance audit function as well as the ethics program is relatively rare in Kansas or in the metro. I don't know exactly how many cities and counties in Kansas have a program like ours, but what I can tell you is that when we go to any kind of regional trainings, we have a training in Johnson County that they hold every year and so on and so forth. There are very few other representatives. I know of Johnson County has, has a program like ours. And I know that Kansas City, Missouri does, but I am not aware of any other program. Lawrence, Douglas County, Leavenworth. Similarly, our ethics program is very progressive compared to any other program in Kansas. We have, most counties and cities don't have a program, an ethics program like we have or a, a performance audit program, an internal performance audit program like we have. So it's in, in that respect, it's very progressive.
Thank you. I'd also like to commend you, I mean, you, you've taken on a heavy load on, on the, Ruth, Ruth not being here and just taking on that, and you've done an awesome job. So I just wanted to commend you on that. I know added workload is, is, have we filled Ruth's position yet? That's a question.
Yes, uh, our previous ethics administrator, Ruth Benin, she was a part of the team for over twelve years. She passed away in January. In July, just last month, we appointed ethics administrator and she's on board. In fact, I left an ethics meeting just a few minutes ago to come here.
Thank you for that. And I know one of the biggest thing Ruth worked on, and thank you for pushing that through, was for several years, numerous years, I think almost a decade or closer or over a decade, she told me, she'd been trying to get the ethics policy renewed. And so I know that you carrying that out for her and I know she would have been happy. She, she just grilled me constantly when I was the mayor to, to get it done. And this commission finally passed it. And so, but it was really, after she passed, you carried that work on, so thank you.
And I'd like to, yeah, we, we'd like to do that more continuously, maybe not. It should probably be done annually at least instead of waiting to accumulate all those amendments.
Yeah. The audits, can, can you just, what type of audits, when you, just for the, anybody that doesn't know, the legislative auditor, what does that mean? What type of audits do you do and how often do you do those? I know I get packets from you. Are those forensic, are those a performance, are they, what, what level of audit? Are they deep dives? Are they, are you looking for fraud, waste and abuse? I mean, what, what are you actually doing? Because for those who know, there are three branches of government under our unified government system. There's the executive branch, which is the mayor, the legislative branch, which is the, all our commissioners. But then not often talked about is the judicial branch, which is the, the legislative auditor. So, talk about that.
So the, the Legislative Auditor's Office is generally described as a performance audit function. And so at the end of the year, you all get an annual report from the finance department. That's a, that's a financial statement audit. We, we're different as we audit performance. And it can be financial transactions, but it, it can be something completely unrelated to financial transactions. We've audited, most recently would be like building usage or we may audit training, compliance with the, any department's particular SOPs. We're currently in an audit of auditing the injury on duty process, work-related injuries and how that process in compliance with our own policies or, or state statutes or whatever the case may be. So we also do, and you get reports on those, we also do some what I call transactional audits. We, we keep an eye on fee reports and from different departments. We review procurement card purchases. Sometimes you get a, a report on that, but if, if, if it's a, a specific transaction that we have a, a question about, that's an audit, but you may not get an audit report. We may just contact the department directly on if, if we find an anomaly on fees or procurement card usage. So, so as far as audits go, there could, it should be described as performance. And then the other, as I said, transactional, our day-to-day. We also serve on a lot of RFPs as a non-voting member to give some kind of independent or unbiased opinion. And also just to monitor the, the procurement process because procurement can at times be a high-risk area.
And that's good information. I know one of the things that I ran on when I became mayor was independent outside, unaffiliated audits. And I know the Robert Bob group came in and they gave us some awesome recommendations that I know staff is still looking over now. But one of those things that came out of that was P-carts and the twenty-three million dollars plus of unaccounted monies over three years. And I know that our staff and our administrators have done a good job, especially our CFO. She's working actively to conduct performance as well as some forensic audits, I believe, as well as some historical audits of, are you working in partnership with our CFO in that regard to just kind of maybe make sure that there's guardrails in place and some early warning systems so we don't recreate those types of issues? And then what's that level of accountability from the legislators, Legislative Auditor's Office? In as far as questionable activity, either that maybe the Ethics Commission could look at or consultation, I'm sure you would have with the DA or the, or the, the district judge, chief judge. How does that work?
So procurement card usage is, is something that we look at pretty routinely and pretty frequently. And we always have since procurement cards began commonplace. Last year, we put an additional focus on it and reported quarterly. A lot of the times, most of the time, those, that analysis and that audit was done behind the scenes, as I said, transactionally, because we could, we have the ability to look at everybody's credit card statement, line by line, transaction by transaction. A really good example is one of the audits that we're required to do is the, by ordinance, is the Commission Travel and Training, Community Event. And I can tell you that I've seen every restaurant slip, every parking, every hotel that the commissioners have done over the last ten or fifteen years. But the camera card usage is something that we look at pretty routinely. Last year also, the, the finance department, we have worked together with the implementation of Workday. There was a lot of, because it's a new system and there were a lot of kinks in the system and a lot of things weren't happening that should have happened. And I think between our department and the finance department, most of those procedural and approvals have been corrected. I think the system is working a lot better now. In addition to that, the finance department has taken on the initiative of having a, I guess you would call it a forensic audit or on a more of a, a database analysis. And they share those results with us, so we get the same results that they get. And we meet on it. In fact, I think we have another meeting next week or very soon. And it, it looks like it's going to be a quarterly review of things that, that you, that are based on algorithms that they can identify, that you may not be able to identify with the naked eye by taking data from other databases. Maybe you have your procurement card data over here and you may have address data or personnel data and you can marry those and see if any anomalies exist. And so that's initiative that the finance department has taken on, but they have shared the results with us. And so we're grateful for that.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for. I just want to reassure the public that the leadership that we have in place with our CFO, with our Legislative Auditor, I wanted them to know that, that, that these early warning systems, looking at the algorithms and all that, that staff is taking that extra step to ensure compliance and to really vet out any instances that may be out there fraud, waste and abuse and, and taking the appropriate action. The other side of that, I'm glad that that relationship is there. We've really honed in on, on auditing what we do here at the Unified Government and, and heighten that level of awareness. As far as that branch, the judicial branch, if you had a, an employee where there was, the alarm goes off, a red flag or whatever the case may be, where some inappropriate conduct, purchases, whatever the case may be, be it ethics code violations or something that may rise to a level of reasonable suspicion of criminality, what would the judicial branch of this government do? Is that something you take to the DA? You have that conversation with the chief judge? What does that look like as far as accountability?
Yeah, if it, if we, we come across something that's fraudulent or fraudulent transaction, that would go to the district attorney. I wouldn't, I probably wouldn't go to the chief judge. I would take that to law enforcement.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, appreciate you.
I'm Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director. The next department we're going to go through is Parks and Recreation. So Parks and Recreation has a total certified proposed budget of fourteen point two million dollars. That crosses a variety of funds, including the Consolidated Parks Fund, County General Fund, Dedicated Sales Tax, Special Parks and Art Fund, Tourism Convention, Public Levy and Sunflower Hills Golf Fund. Of that funding, there's eighty-five point seven five full-time equivalent positions that are included. Within the department, we have an administrative function, a Parks Division, Recreation Division. Sunflower Hills Golf Course is an independent, we-operated entity within the Parks Department. And then the county museum, which makes up the county general fund portion of the, of the Parks and Rec. Within the department, 51% is personnel, 6% is other, 23% contractual services, 7% commodities and 13% capital. Of the total UG tax levy, they make up about 3%. And then of the general funds only less than 1% because they have their own separate funding source with an independent levy. The largest portion of the budget is personnel, 51%. Primary expenses within the Parks and Rec operating budget include just maintenance, general maintenance of facilities and upkeep of grounds across the park system at roughly 40%. That would include things like insurance costs, natural gas, pair of maintenance budgets. Mowing and landscaping services is, is another large item at 22%. And then just maintenance and operation of their fleet comes in at about 21%. And that would be parent maintenance of equipment, gasoline and diesel expenses. Some items that were changed within this year's 26 proposed budget. We're putting in funding for county park waterline studies to identify what needs to happen in the county parks, in the Wyandotte County Park. Well, and community center contractual increases about $30,000 to continue operations and then parks asset management system maintenance of 80,000 going forward. And then there's a variety of capital items that are in the budget. The top set of items, playground equipment, community center improvements, riverfront park, planning and design, lane hall HVAC and vehicle and equipment replacement program. Those are typical items that you see throughout the certified budget. And then we do have a subset of roughly a million dollars of items that we've identified for the potential tourism tax increase for the World Cup. That would include funding for footsall court maintenance, stone pillar replacement at Wyandotte County Park, solar lighting improvements at Call Point Park. And then various parking and playground improvements across Wyandotte County Lake and Park. Turn it over to the Parks Department.
Questions and comments?
Thank you, Michael. Angel Farrar, director for Parks and Recreation. And tonight I have with me Matthew Zayas, our fiscal analyst. And then our park manager, Vincent Bellacci, and then Shay Lockett, our recreation division manager could not be with us tonight. But I'll start off by saying thank you for allowing us the opportunity tonight to come before you. We are really appreciative of the support of this commission, our leadership and our mayor for Parks and Recreation. We've had several improvements over the last few years, supported with grants, and we're really starting to get a lot of good feedback on that. So Parks and Recreation, we oversee 54 parks, roughly 2,500 acres of parkland. We have six community centers, three halls, one public swimming pool, four splash pads. And so we oversee a variety of assets, land facilities, if you will. And then on top of that, our recreation division does their best to deliver programs such as summer camp programs, youth sports, community events and so on. I know that it was mentioned tonight by our DA that, you know, when people are looking to move into counties, they're looking first and foremost for safety and then they look at schools. And then I believe thirdly, they look at parks because families want to have nice parks for their kids to come play at and enjoy some free amenities. So I do want to talk a little bit about what we have on here and then I'll be happy to answer any questions and I promise to keep it short. So just talking a little bit about the FTE count, so that 85.75 number going into 2026 does account for four positions that we would be freezing. So currently our FTE count is 89.75. And then also just wanting to not forget that in the revenue neutral process, our department did cut seven positions. So going into 2026, we would have 11 less positions than we did in 2024. And then also just taking a look, this year we've kept a pretty steady vacancy rate, anywhere from 20 to 25%. Just depending on the time of year. And currently we have 17 vacancies with 12 of those in parks. And I say that just to reiterate what an amazing job our team has done, just adjusting to the changes we've had to scale back in mowing in some areas. And I, I know that some of you have probably received some phone calls and we've received those too. And I will say that our community has been really patient and understanding with the strategy that we've utilized this year, just with having lower staffing levels and adjusting the way that we mow our parks. So can't thank them enough for being really understanding. It's, it's helped make, taken the hard calls a little easy. And so with that being said, again, with those 17 vacancies, 12 of those are in parks. And I do think it's really important to know that the Parks team does support public works, especially when it comes to snow operations. So moving on, just speaking a little bit about the capital improvement projects, a lot of, of what you see up here is really deferred maintenance. There's really no new projects and I will point out that the riverfront park amenities, planning and design, oh, yep, is for, mainly for design dollars. But everything else you see up here are really requests for just a lot of the deferred maintenance that our department is working to address. A lot of these are in the form of annual programs and for example, the playground replacement programs and annual program, community center, some, a few that aren't on here would be the aquatics program. And then also our annual shelter repair program. We, I think submitted roughly $4.1 million in requests for the department. And I think probably roughly what's currently in, and I know this can change, the proposed approve request is roughly 2.3. So we do our best to leverage the dollars when we can, when we get those, maximize grants, just to maybe get like a two-for-one deal if we can to get two projects done, maybe for the price of one. So we'll continue to explore opportunities to do that in here. I will say too, some of the unfunded things that aren't on here are more annual programs that our department has identified, like for example, lighting program, just to kind of put that into perspective. Last year we had 1,876 baseball field, just baseball field reservations. And all of our parks, streets in our parks are our department's responsibility to manage and maintain. And so a lot of our infrastructure, especially lighting, is original infrastructure. And we are seeing a lot of safety issues with a lot of the light poles getting blown over in storms and needing to be replaced. And as you can imagine, sport lighting is not as cost-friendly as maybe some regular lighting, which lighting in general is expensive. So other annual programs, parking lot maintenance programs, dock replacement, some maintenance work out at the lake. And then also you'll see up here, waterline study work. If you recall, over the last probably five to seven years, our department did a five-phase waterline replacement at Wyandotte County Lake. Pretty extensive. And so it was, it's been really good to have that project done, but we still have two other county parks that also, also are in need of having the same type of work done. Again, dealing with some original infrastructure. But I'll stop there. Happy to answer any questions you might have. I, I could talk forever, but I'll keep it short.
Thank you. Commissioner Kay?
Thank you, Mayor. A few years ago, I was excited one day about the Korean memorial and the Vietnam memorial out there at the lake. And with the mayor and their commissioners' help, Parks and Rec was able to come up with some funding for it. And it's probably one of the nicest events that I've attended in the 20 years I've been here. It was, it was awesome. It looks great. Keep it up. And in fact, all the parks look great with the, with the manpower that you don't have. I can't imagine what it would look like if you had more. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Davis, Angel and Matt, you all know, I'm a big fan of, of parks. I think one of the, the hard things to really look at is we're looking at a much slimmer year when it comes to some of those projects that we have seen in, in previous years. And you know, after reading the, the report, we understand ARPA has come to an end and we've kind of shifted priorities on community development dollars. Are there any other CIP projects, major CIP projects that is not on the screen? That would be good for us to know that's coming next year?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I would say as far as next year, this is probably a good snapshot of that, but I think looking ahead into 27, and I, I know I mentioned this, I think in April, when we gave an update. But similarly to the rock wall at the lake, which I'm happy to provide an update. I'm shocked no one's asked me yet. So thank you. Marshall Creek Bridge is going to need to be looked at and we are actively, proactively looking at our report to make sure we have some really solid information. So we are hoping to, like I said, be proactive so we can address that before it becomes a catastrophic failure. And then, you know, we're not in the best position. But I would say that is a, a big one on the horizon. That, that isn't necessarily built into 26, but hopefully we can do some proactive work, maybe some design work to be in a better position in 27. And then a big one on here is the George Mine HVAC at 230,000. So again, George Mine was rented 116 times last year. So it is a very popular venue for the community. It provides a space for entertain, or for them to reserve for weddings and, and other things. But similar to George Mine, Pearson Park is in the same boat. It has an original boiler and chiller system that's 40, 50 years old. 40. And that's probably on the horizon. We're going to try to push it to 27, but you know, doing the best we can there on that. But, um, so those are some bigger ones that didn't maybe necessarily make it into 26, but it's high on our radar and just trying to be proactive on that work.
Yeah. And I bring up these things because while, and I know for, for public safety, there's kind of a line share that they take up, right? Of, of the budget, usually something has to go wrong, right? For you to see that response from our public safety folks with parks, it's things people are celebrating, right? Events they're celebrating, key points in their lives, they're going out, they're having fun. And I, I would just like to see a more robust investment as much as we can. I know we are in a tight budget, but it's going to be tough to really, really sell what we are doing with the taxpayer dollars. If we can't keep the momentum going for investment, there are some ideas that I have for other revenue sources. And I know that there's some discussion on TGT dollars and what we can do there to increase that, that investment as well. But I'll just let that, uh, uh, sit there. The other thing I wanted to ask, is it your department that oversees the maintenance and mowing of the medians? Or where do you all fall within that?
Yes. So our department is over the, we call them the hardscape medians, so grass medians if it's, or, yeah, sorry.
You're good.
Grass scape, or the grass medians, not the hardscapes. If there's no grass on that, normally that's public work. So yes, we're over that.
Gotcha, gotcha. Cause I know in my district and, and I really kind of all over town, that has been kind of a constant concern, which is kind of the maintenance and mowing. And I know you all alone do not oversee mowing. But I do think it's time that we make the maintenance of our community a high priority. What is your current budget, if you know, for kind of maintenance and mowing for the 2026 budget?
Um, so contractually, including the cemeteries, the medians, the parks, the ball fields, and then beautifying those grass scape medians. We have a little over $700,000 and then that doesn't account for all of our groundskeeping staff and everybody else who does mowing maintenance work too.
Gotcha. And was that the same amount from last year or is that an increase?
That was the same amount as last year.
Gotcha. I've been hearing a lot from folks in my district, again, it's the physical manifestation of their tax dollars. I understand we cannot do everything, but I would like to see just a more aggressive approach to the maintenance and the mowing of our community. And I know particularly on the east side of town, if you live next to more land bank lots, that is honestly one of the main issues that you hear. But even in my district, I hear it quite a bit and there's just a lot of work that needs to be done there. And so I can imagine if you're receiving the same amount from the previous year, that dollar is being stretched thin. I want to make sure you all are well-resourced within reason, of course, to make sure that you have those particular resources available. Last thing I'll ask, the museum is, let me just make sure I understand, it's now under Parks?
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Cause I saw that within the budget and I was like, that's a little new since, since I've been here. And so I'm glad that you all are able to, to collaborate on, on the museum as well. Thank you.
I'd just like to let the commissioner know, myself and Commissioner Townsend, I've been working with the administrator and I've had numerous conversations. He is looking at reorganizing some of the departments in a way to make mowing and blight mitigation more efficient. There are several departments that currently do those types of things. Having a streamlined operation believes, we believe could be a little more efficient. And you have one point of contact that could handle the mowing and blight mitigation throughout, throughout our community. And so just let the community know, let staff know, but more importantly, let the commissioner know, the administrator is looking at, at options on how to better address blight and, and mowing in a way that could be more efficient and hit the areas that are most visible to the public. So.
Mayor, Commissioner Townsend has her hand raised.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor Townsend, District One, and thank you, Commissioner Davis, also for the lead-in to just where I'm going. But first of all, I have to say that I have appreciated working with Parks and Rec staff and everyone seated at the table tonight. And they've done the best, great job that they can do with the reductions that the 2025 budget restraints placed upon them. So have to acknowledge that. But as the mayor said, and as Commissioner Davis alluded to, and I've said before, it's one thing to live the budget. And we absolutely, in my opinion, have to find some way to fund more cuttings in the year 2026, especially as we look at internationals coming to our city. This would be the minimum. I know infrastructure is a big thing, safety will be a big thing. This would be one of the most dollar productive things we could do at the lower end of the dollar scale. So I would like to ask for clarity, a couple of questions, so I know again, just where we are on this, Ms. Farrar. With regard to land bank, are those lots cut out of budget funds for Parks and Rec or another budget? I know there was a loss of people, not that they left the UG, but maybe a reorganization is a better way to say that. So if you could talk about, are land banks cut from under this budget, from the Parks and Rec budget?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Townsend. Angel Farrar, Parks and Rec. So just a little bit of recap and history on that. So historically, the Parks and Rec department did oversee the abatement team. And that team was always kept separate, so it didn't have any Parks and Rec funding tied to that program. And so last year through the budget process to find efficiencies, cutting that pro, or that team, which was two teams, down to one was part of one of the strategies. And then also the mowing budget for land banks did get reduced as well. And that's why the land bank mowing went from a 14-day rotation to about a 28-day rotation.
Right. The, the land bank, you said it went from a 14-day to 28, yes. And let me, let me edit that a little bit, at least a 28-day. It may have been a little bit more than that in some cases, but that is one of the things I would, it would be urgent for us to address in a better way. address in a better way so that Parks and Rec receives more funds to do that on a cycle that is going to make our city all over look better. The the eastern section, as Commissioner Davis says, does take a hit. The other thing that I've noticed is with the, maybe this was the remediation team that is under, was under your control, is that correct? Under 2024?
Sorry, Commissioner Townsend, this is Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director. I'm not sure that I caught the last part of your question, so we might have to.
Okay.
I just wanted to to clarify, I guess, the changes that we made in the budget for this year going into next year. Buildings and Logistics now oversees the the abatement team, and they currently have the funding for that within their budget. We're going to hear from them at a future budget workshop. Economic Development now has the coordinator position for the land bank mowing, and they also have the budget for the land bank mowing. And that's new this year. And they're also scheduled to come back in a future meeting. And then Parks and Rec, I guess they can explain more, but I believe you're mostly in charge of mowing ballfields, parks, cemeteries, and medians.
Okay, I'm a bit more confused now. Let me go back to how it was before the 2025 budget, and I can follow it a little bit better. So in 2024, under Parks and Rec, you had land bank, is that correct?
Yes.
And that was and and things that were mowed under land bank were mowed on a 28 day cycle, basically twice a month.
So let me, let me clarify. So we had the land bank mowing in 2024. And that original rotation was at least to meet a 14 day rotation on mowing, yes.
Right, right. But under revenue neutral, this year's scheme that we're living now, it's down to about once a month. Correct?
Yes, and that program had has moved to Building and Logistics.
Okay.
Economic Development.
Under Economic Development? Okay, so we've yet yet to see that. Okay. And then, under the 2024 budget, you also had a remediation team?
Yes, the abatement team.
The abatement team. And is that still with you, or that is under the auspices of another department now?
Yes, the abatement team is under Building and Logistics.
Okay. So who do you have that's responsible for mowing? Just just parks? Is that the only mowing responsibility that you have now?
So we have, yes, our mowing is parks, cemeteries, medians, ball fields. I think we might still do a couple WPC sites.
That got shifted out too.
Oh, no. Yep. So just medians, ball fields, parks, and cemeteries.
Okay. And your proposal for 2026 is that same scheme, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, that's helpful because this year did become, to me at least, a bit confusing. And if you can recall for me, it seemed as though there were two remediation teams in 2024. And one of them, okay, and so these people didn't leave the UG as employees, but what happened to one of those abatement teams? Only one remained. What happened to those other persons?
So we didn't cut any warm bodies. Some some members on that team did take another position, whether that was somewhere else in the organization or outside of the organization.
Okay, I just wanted.
They chose that themselves.
Okay, all right. Well, I have to commend under the 2024 scheme, and I know the 2025 scheme is doing the best that they could do through no fault of their own. There was never time when I didn't put in a request for extreme vegetation or dumping, the clearance of dumping from a constituent, that those abatement teams, when we had two, didn't move immediately under Parks and Rec. And so I have to thank them again. Some of them, as you said, may still be our UG employees, but doing other jobs. But I have to recognize the job they did, and it made it all the more apparent what we were losing in this year and how the area looked. So well, these questions are going to help me better analyze the numbers. It was more the schematic and more the plea for us to, with respect to this mowing and how things are mowed, particularly land bank remediation, that could be dumping. It could be overgrown weeds of people who own the property. It's privately owned, but they are not subscribing to codes. And that is a problem for their neighbors and the way this community looks. So again, I have to thank you, Ms. Farrar, and all of the people there, Mr. Logi, everyone there for Parks and Rec for the great job that you do with what you have. And thank you again for a great season at Parkwood Pool and to our partners with Midwest and the good job that they did and those lifeguards did this year. Appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I applaud the work of you all too. I know I've said it time and time again that Angel and her team in the Parks Department, they've touched just about every park in this county, particularly those those areas that have been disinvested and disenfranchised, really east of 78th Street. And if you look at the parks downtown, new parks were created. Strawberry Hill has a new park. Starting, I mean, parks that hadn't been touched for years. So thank you and your team for really just making sure that those types of amenities were available to our residents, particularly in those areas that had been long forgotten. And and now those parks look really nice, and they're being utilized. I go to these parks a lot and families and these young people are using the pickleball courts, the basketball courts, they're walking. And when you talk about a community that historically has been unhealthy, parks is really key to that because now people are out of their houses, they're exercising, they're enjoying the amenities, getting fresh air and becoming healthier. And and parks is taking the lead in that. And so thank you so much. You all have done a phenomenal job. And so thank you so much. Question, you have six rec centers, I think. Is that what you said?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
What does that utilization look like out of the record? Which one is used the most and which one is used the least?
That's that's tough. Well, as as you all know, we've had Earl Watson Community Center closed for a little over a year, and a lot of that is predominantly due to staffing and and safety issues. We were able to get some programming in there this summer, but it was temporary. As far as utilization goes, it really depends on the season. Some centers are used more than others. But I the the usage varies. What we've started to do is every month at Park Board, we do give a report on the numbers and usage for each center. So we do have that information to share. It could be anywhere from 900 visitors, 500 visitors to 2, 3,000 plus. I know like last year, for example, our center saw an influx of people because of the record turnout and voter registration. So it really just depends. But they are actively being used, and there's a lot of desire for community groups to come in and use the spaces as well. Be happy to share that information. It's just, it's just hard to say. And then I also just put a plug in for the Department's annual report. We do cover a lot of numbers and data in there as far as usage for fields, shelters, halls, community centers and things like that. But happy to share that detailed information if you'd like that.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then on that same line, what about parks? I mean, are there certain parks? I know there's like these outlaying parks that really nobody uses. Have we identified those parks as a as a way to free up, you know, maintenance costs that may be associated with those?
Yeah, so that's an interesting question. So there's a couple of ways that our department currently tracks some of that. This sounds silly, some of it is by the volume of trash that we have in those parks or by the number of shelter reservations. There are some pretty savvy technology out there right now, like Placer AI, that can give us more detailed information and hopefully one day we can get there. But what we actually kind of started to take a look at this year, going back to the mowing strategy, is we have roughly 1,100 mobile acres in-house that we mow. And so knowing that there were some days where we only had two groundskeepers or four groundskeepers that does the mowing, we we went into the season with a strategy. We knew we couldn't mow everything down. So we worked to determine a list of three tiers essentially, and trying to take a look at our parks off usage and maintenance, and then really taking a look at, well, what does it look like to implement a strategy to where you know, tier one is maybe used more, these parks get a higher level of care and maintenance, and then tier two and tier three and so on. We're still working through that process, but we did implement that a little bit in our parks. And I think out of the 1,100 mobile acres, we scaled back on about 17%. And so what does that mean? That means, you know, we we try to meet a seven to 10 day rotation with mowing our parks. The areas we scaled back were more on like a 15 to 21 day rotation for mowing. So not mowing everything down, which, you know, some people do view that as a strategy to to be more efficient and to just be more intentional and conscious about, you know, keeping some of our areas more of a a nature and natural place.
Now, when I was on the police department, this goes back to the 90s, when community policing first kicked off, probably early 90s. I know a lot of our neighborhood groups, and they were obviously a lot more, they were over 180 at that time, I believe, at the height. I believe there was like Adopt a Park, where a lot of neighborhood groups would adopt parks, they would mow, they would pick up trash, they would do those things to help the the city. Do we still have any programs like that or in place? Are we working with local neighborhoods at all to our our neighborhood groups to 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 try and look at maybe reinstituting things like that to really get to get our community involved in taking care of the very amenities that they say they want to help keep them, you know, with the beautification?
Yeah, and that's a great idea. I know that a few years ago, I think Public Works did try to implement a program called Adopt a Spot. And then within that Adopt a Spot program, there was an Adopt a Park program. I I'd have to check with them because they manage that program to see if they still have a staff member overseeing that, but I I think it's still in use because some parks did get adopted and occasionally we'll have groups come in to get trash bags and clean the park, but it could probably be a lot more of a robust program as well.
You'd be surprised of what a $20 trophy would do in a neighborhood for folks, and you challenge them. If you keep this park up, you know, your neighborhood or you know, your group will be that group to be recognized by by parks. I mean, I mean, just, I'm trying to help just think of anything.
Yeah.
Probably help with that. Commissioner Min has a question. Before I challenge the our future commissions and future mayors, when I was on the police department, working with community policing, what was really valuable when you talk about blight, going back to what we called the the broken windows theory, it really addressed those things that really brought the decreases in crime at that time, was blight and blight mitigation. We had Operation Brightside that we'd call them and we would work with them, everything from graffiti, getting up trash, ops would work with the neighborhood groups to do cleanup blitzes as well as in parks, things of that nature. I don't know how often we do those things anymore, but it really would be great. I believe Operation Brightside eventually morphed into SOAR before I left. And I just don't hear a lot of dedicated blight mitigation apparatus or an ecosystem with unified government. But I think it's maybe it's past time we get back to that. Because when you talk about weeds and trash blowing down the street and, you know, just the blight and and I know we talked about public safety, we talked about parks, and we talked about schools. But one of the other biggest concerns that we get from residents is blight and and weeds and trash. And it really makes our community very look unsightly. So, you know, even if you solve crime and all those things, if you roll into a neighborhood and you see trash everywhere and weeds, you know, and you can call them whatever you want, or someone folks like to say, oh, take it back to its natural state. Well, that doesn't sit well for some communities. I've gone to other cities and I can tell you, I went to Detroit and and I was shocked walking down the street. And I was with the Greater Kansas City Chamber. And one of the things that stood out to us walking in downtown Detroit, and we were looking at them recovering from their bankruptcy, we were hard pressed to find a cigarette butt on the street, and we looked, it was that well maintained. And so I just, I challenged this commission and our and our staff and administration and future elected officials that may be looking to really put some attention and maybe get back to having some type of apparatus, department, or streamlined system in place to really hone in on blight and mowing and all those things that you're hearing from our commissions. But the reason you hear from our commissioners is because we're hearing from the community. That that tends to be a huge problem. Also, the policies. I know that again, I go back to when I was on the police department, Public Works used to, if there was tree limbs down, things like that, they would actually go with a dump truck, saw it, pick it up and take it to the dump. I don't know where we got away from doing those types of things as well as having rovers and trucks that would go and pick up mattresses and kitchen sinks along along the roadway. I just coming up with a better strategy as well as our policies. And this is more for the commission. Looking at maybe getting back to as we can increase funding and staffing and maybe streamline the process to have it more dedicated to blight. Look at the right of ways. There are a lot of, I know there was, and I believe Commissioner Kane, I think he was contacted well. There was an elderly gentleman a couple of years ago that was trying to mow his right of way and his, he would think he was in his 80s, and his mower fell over on him because he didn't have the appropriate equipment to do those types of things. I just think we need to take a hard look. We're asking our residents to pay more, but we're giving them a lot less. And I just think that if you talk to some of the staff members that I know that have worked here for years, that I've worked with for years, that are still here, that have worked. And that's why I say we need to talk to the the boots on the ground, where the rubber hits the road. They're saying they can do those things, but sometimes the directives and the policies that have come down have changed, and they're not allowed to do those things, or they're being directed to do other things. And so, but they're still, they're saying that they can still do those types of things if they're directed to. We got great employees here that actually do the work in the field, and they're willing to do the work. It's just, you just have to have the type of leadership in place. And I'm not talking about you. But and and the will to direct employees to do those types of things that we know, we've shown before, that can be done. So, but thank you to your entire team. You all have done.
Thank you.
And I can't praise you enough. And the reason I praise you so much is because I get the praise from the community on just the outstanding job, and they're so happy to be able to have parks they can be proud of. So thank you for for your team's work. Commissioner Min?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that, first of all, thank you for all that you all do. I really appreciate everything about your department. But Mayor, I just wanted to address the Adopt a Spot Cleanup Program. The that program exists at least in part because my Kiwanis Club of KCK West, we adopted 126th Street by Wyandotte County Park pre-COVID. We still clean it to this day. We just discussed a cleanup date this morning at our meeting. We still clean 126th Street from state to pass the ag hall. And so we are participating. And I think that Public Works, I think, even put us up a little sign to denote that that area is adopted by us. So as far as I know, that program is operating and encourage other groups to adopt parks and places around parks to help keep clean. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Townsend has her hand raised.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor Townsend, District One. Wanted to mention, I had the opportunity that whether contracts or it's it's our employees cutting land bank, they'll know with the with the parks. So I know it won't be our employees, but anywhere where So I know it won't be our employees, but anywhere we're having to contract people to cut these lots, we need to make sure that the scope of the work to be done is clear. And they should not only cut the lot assigned, but also, uh, the neutral ground, as they used to say in New Orleans, in front of them. Unfortunately, I've run across, uh, situations this year where I don't know if we did not adequately define the scope of what was to be done, but that should never be the case where they're cutting a lot and the strip in front of it is left with, uh, weeds and grass and gone uncut. So wherever the responsibilities of these contractors end up, uh, next year or at the end of this year, that is something that should be, uh, addressed and made plain, uh, of the entire scope of the job they are to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Parks Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director, we're going to move on to municipal court, which is the last department on our, um, meeting agenda for tonight. Um, so 2026 budget for municipal court was $2.9 million. Um, they have 21 FTEs that are part of that budget of their budget, 67% is personnel, 32% contractual services. Um, in the city tax levy budget, they make up about 1%. Percent of the city general fund, again, about 1%. We did increase costs for systems maintenance since they had a new software system that they recently implemented as well as additional funding for the defense councils, um, which we did have to identify. In, um, 2024, we discovered that that funding wasn't adequate to, to fund those contracts. So some key notes, um, there was some COVID funding that was used in municipal court in 2021 to implement a new court management system. Um, that is what we're, um, identifying maintenance funding for in this 2026 budget. Um, and then system maintenance, defense council and interpreting services make up 96% of their operating budget outside of personnel. So really they have a very small discretionary operating budget within their department. Over to the department.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, uh, County Administrator David Johnston. Uh, we are happy to be here with you guys tonight. We know we're at the end, so we will make this short. Um, we have done everything that we can to try to trim and streamline and make our budget more efficient. We do constantly have as part of our interpreter contract, an interpreter in person for Spanish interpretation at every docket. That is the highest, uh, number of people that we have that speak another language. But as far as every other language that we encounter, we use, uh, Proprio. Uh, it is a video and/or audio service depending on who, how, how our connection is. And that is, uh, 75 cents a minute, which is a heck of a lot cheaper than paying for an interpreter in person because you have to pay a two hour minimum, even if they're only interpreting for one person. Uh, we deal with several different languages, uh, ranging from languages that only have 200,000 people in the world that speak it. But yet constitutionally, we have to provide an interpreter for defendants that are in our court, uh, at court hearings, whether or not it is easy to obtain an interpreter. The court management software that we are continuing to transition to is allowing us to ultimately reduce the, um, we are not eliminating any employees, but as employees move on, uh, from the court clerk one position, we are going to be able to eliminate some of those positions because we will not need as much data entry. Because this court software system, uh, will integrate or does integrate with the e-ticket system that KCK PD currently uses. That will eliminate the need for the data entry. Um, we unfortunately, you know, during the transition period, we are still have to pay for our current, uh, court software. So that's kind of why the cost is a little weird next year because we're going to have to be paying for both for a certain amount of time until the transition is fully complete. I'm happy to hear any questions or, or comments.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner Davis.
Uh, very quickly, Judge, thank you so much. Um, just want to give, uh, credit and congratulations. So it's, you, you are the president of the Kansas Municipal.
Yes, I was elected the president of the Kansas Municipal Judges Association this year.
Congratulations, that's a nice thing. And your colleague, uh, was also a Judge Whitman, was also awarded for her work on traffic law. Uh, can you also talk very briefly about that as well?
I'm trying to remember the name of the position that it is. Do you remember? It's something to do with the American Bar Association. And she will be helping educate traffic law judges, uh, across the US. So that is phenomenal for us.
It's very, very important and I'm sure, and we already did a whole release and everything, but I just wanted to say congratulations. I do see the defense counsel cost for a hundred thousand dollars. We did have a discussion with the, we understand lawyers are expensive. Um, can you just speak to what that dynamic has been and why that, um, uh, increase for cost?
So our old contract with previous, uh, appointed defense counsel was set up differently than this one is. Previous contracts, defense counsel never met with, uh, defendants outside of court. They, uh, would spend only time within the courtroom with their clients. So that caused them to have to attempt to hurriedly review discovery, give them their plea offer, talk about their options. This contract that we have now, we believe better serves not only, um, the court as a whole, but it also serves defendants better and it ensures, uh, that there will be no issues with appeals as far as effective assistance of counsel. People have the opportunity to make an appointment with their attorney outside of our court dockets. Those attorneys are present in our court every Thursday and Friday, except for the fifth week of the month. We just have it set up for every, um, the first four weeks of the month. So not only are they handling in-person dockets, video dockets during that time, but they're also having outside, uh, hours where they meet with their clients. Um, so that has, of course, you know, that costs more. Uh, but constitutionally, we do have to provide people with an appointed attorney. Uh, if jail is sought, uh, that of course is in part dictated by ordinance, but also dictated by what the prosecutor's office is requesting, uh, which is of course under, uh, Ms. Lawson's purview because she is their boss. Um, they work for her department, not for our department. I think that's really important for people to understand because I think there is sometimes confusion about whether or not the prosecutors work for municipal court. They do not. Um, and then the, uh, appointed defense counsel, uh, it is an hourly rate that we pay them. And so that fluctuates depending on the number of people that have been appointed. We have also streamlined our appointment, uh, process. We have people get an affidavit, they gather their documents, they present that affidavit to one of our employees, our real, um, risk engagement assessment liaison. He reviews the documentation that they provide to him. He is a notary, so they're able to notarize and sign that affidavit in front of him. It is distributed to the judges. We review that and make a determination as to whether or not someone qualifies. Uh, we use 125% of the federal poverty guideline as our, uh, what, what we use to determine if somebody qualifies. And of course that's affected by the number of dependents you have. So, um, and, you know, we, obviously when 2025 started, we adjusted it based on the 2025 numbers, um, given by the federal government.
Thank you.
Judge, thank you, Commissioner. Does dispute resolutions, does this still exist?
Yes, it does. It is, I, not under our department, uh.
Some under human services.
Thank you. Yes.
And thank you so much, uh, awesome feedback on your leadership, the things that you're trying to do to innovate as well. Um, I've gotten positive feedback from, uh, people that have interacted with you in the court. And so they're really pleased, both attorneys and people that have just, you know, paying their tickets, doing those types of things that come before you. And they're, um, they may not always like the outcome, but they appreciate the professionalism, um, of what the municipal court does, um, including a lot of attorneys that, that come before you as well. So thank you, uh, so much for that. I know you're trying to innovate and, and quickly, are there any other best practices? And I asked this earlier, uh, to the DA and to the sheriff, best practices, innovations, any, I see programs that, that allow you, any other things out there that maybe in the future, mayors and commissions can look at to streamline operations? Um, uh, that maybe other, uh, municipal courts are doing in the nation, uh, that can hopefully save our, our taxpayers some money. I, I don't know what that will look like.
So one of the most innovative municipal courts in the United States is in Akron, Ohio. Uh, so we carefully follow, um, what they put out, what they're doing, just to see if we're able to adapt any of it, uh, to our courts. Um, we have done several things. We, um, allow people to have an ability to pay hearing. Because of COVID, we had stopped community service that has restarted. And that is actually handled through our community policing department. One of the issues that we had had previously with community service was, at one point it was done through MCSP, which required people to pay a fee to be monitored by MCSP. And until you could pay the fee, you couldn't start your hours. So that kind of defeated in my mind the point of community service. And then we had kind of gone to, uh, a, a point where we were trying to have our probation officers monitor that. Um, we have two probation officers to monitor all the people that are on probation. So that didn't really work out that great. So when COVID happened, we kind of just stopped community service. And, you know, we have, uh, restarted it with, with community policing. And we also have, um, our real officer who monitor, who receives all the information from community policing regarding hours. And he kind of monitors that for us. We attempt, we had a program that was, um, helping us get people their driver's licenses back. The funding, of course, ran out for that. So what we try to do is if it's a Kansas driver's license, we definitely try to look up their driving record for them. We direct them to the employee that's actually from Driver Solutions and Mission. Um, we do as much as we can to try to get them reinstated because people who have driver's licenses have better economic opportunities. They have better options to get a job, they have better health outcomes overall. Uh, so, you know, those kinds of programs are programs that were started in courts like the Akron Court. So we do try to, when we can, we have to obviously deal with what funding constraints that we do have.
No disrespect, Judge, I'm not going to let you give Akron too much credit. Your site's going to test to it. Uh, we were doing, because your site was in community policing at one time and we were, and it was a really robust program. MS, uh, program where we had those people out picking up trash, mowing, painting, uh, doing a lot of those things. So it's good to hear you all get back to that. I just challenge, um, even with our downtown, I mean, there's dedicated officers working with, uh, the downtown shareholders.
Mm-hmm.
Opportunity there to help pick up trash and beautify our downtown along that, that, that area. Um, um, uh, working with those officers that, that we know will be there. Um, as well as, I don't, I don't know what that would look like, uh, as far as our parks, you know, some of the, the, the nonviolent offenders that, you know, maybe work with the, some of our, our departments to help do those things in those areas where the need is, is the greatest. So, but, but that's awesome to hear that. I know Judge Myers on the district side, she also does that and she assigns. So I don't know if there's some room for collaboration with the district court as well to get the bodies we need to be able to go out and do some things to help, um, with some of the, the challenges that I know that our staff has here at the unified government. Just when we talk about blight, trash, beautification, um, our other things that, uh, that, uh, you as a judge may, maybe you may see of value. Last thing. This question has always come up, even when I was on the police department. Um, and I don't know, I, it's probably logistical, a personnel, a deal. I know other cities have it, they have weekend court and they have night courts. I don't know if that's ever been considered here as an option for our working families. Sometimes it's hard for people to get off work. Um, and if they can't get off work and they have to choose between going to court or going to work to feed their families, sometimes they'll choose to go to work to feed their families and they end up with a warrant. They're stopped by the police, their car is towed, they're incarcerated and it's just a downhill spiral. If we had weekend court or court to where maybe they could come in for a couple of hours after hours, I don't know what that would look as far as, uh, flexing hours. I know you all bring in, uh, uh, judges that, uh, contractually. Um, I, I just don't know what that would look like to have that opportunity. If you can't do it like regularly, maybe once a quarter, once a month, or whatever the case may be, um, to allow those families and those working individuals that, uh, probably want to take care of, of their legal, uh, challenges, uh, but just can't afford to take off work because maybe their boss won't let them or financially they can't. Um, I, I think that would go a long way of helping a lot of working families and helping some of those, those individuals take care of, 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 of their, their legal obligations, um, while also maintaining, um, their ability to go to work and do those types of things. Because I do know for a lot of working families, um, some of their employers just won't let them off. And I dealt with, I dealt, I can tell you, I can't tell you how many people I've arrested over the 32 years, um, because they had a warrant. Um, and I had to tow their car, they were incarcerated, I'd see them out, they lost their job. And now that hole is even deeper for them to dig out of, you know? Now you're talking broken families, um, and a lot of other things that I saw some individuals do. And I'm not saying it's right and I'm not condoning it, um, but they ended up just spiraling out of control and just, you know, uh, going down a road that, uh, really doesn't reflect what we want, um, our residents to do is live productive, uh, lifestyle. So I didn't know if that was ever a thought or an option, or, or we've even thought about that here at the, at the unified government.
We have discussed it before. Um, it is largely a funding matter. So you have to have, um, people from, uh, Steve Owen's department available because you have to have, uh, security. Uh, we have to, uh, abide by our union contract. And I know that there are some restrictions as far as what we can do with employees' hours. Um, and then, you know, we have to be able to, to pay whoever it is that, you know, whether it's Judge Whitman and I, uh, or if it is, you know, a series of pro temp judges. And I know that when, every time we have looked at it, it has just not been financially feasible. What we have done is for someone who receives a traffic ticket, if they cannot make their first court date, we have a link on our unified government website on the municipal court page that allows them to request a one-time continuance, uh, so that they, if they can't make that first appearance, they're not automatically getting a warrant as long as they request that continuance, uh, at least 24 hours in advance. Now with misdemeanor cases, i- it's different. Uh, it is important for people to, it, it's important for people to appear for traffic tickets too. But with misdemeanor cases and particularly complaining witnesses appear, it, it's not really easy to monitor that like it is with the traffic. it, it's not really easy to monitor that like it is with the traffic. Um, and so one of our clerks just automatically issues those continuances to people if they are requested. Um, so we do have avenues, uh, that we do try to leave open for people. Uh, we do get emails on our, you know, we have an email address, kckmunicourt@ycoKCK.org. And our clerks are good about answering those emails, about giving people options. Um, I know if, for example, there, people are ill or in the hospital, we are really good about accommodating without having to post a bond. We also have a very generous bonding policy compared to a lot of places in the metro area. If defendants have never had to post bond on the case before, it is a hundred dollars. And then it goes up by $50 each time. We also have a policy that, um, if you owe fines and fees and the bond that you posted yourself is forfeited, we apply it to those fines and fees first, which we didn't historically used to do. And we just figure it's more fair that way. Uh, we aren't comfortable doing that when, for example, your mom or your sister or friend has posted that bond for you, uh, like a surety bond.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Judge. And, uh, thank you to our, uh, our staff for, for the budget presentation, our administrator. I know it's a long meeting. Thank you all commissioners and those that may be watching and staff for bearing with us. Um, I, I want to re, again, I want to thank staff again for getting, uh, the line items to the commissioners. They're not down to the penny, but I know if we want it down to the penny, staff has assured the commissioners that they can get it down to the penny. But, but these line items are a lot more than what, uh, we usually see on these PowerPoints. And you've heard some of our commissioners weigh in on that tonight. So we have no further business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
David's second. Motion and a second. Clerk roll call.
Roll call. Burrows. Townsend.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Lopez.
Aye.
Stites. Davis.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
The vote is nine to zero. The motion carries.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.